Thank you, Megan. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. I hope you enjoyed your time in Bulling Green and Russellville. I believe that Patrice was in charge of choosing the hotel and Holly was in charge of the weather. At least, that's what Holly told me yesterday. So they both did a great job. So thank you so much. Dr. Brewer, if you would, please call roll.
Joanne Adams. Holly Bloodworth.
Here.
Patrice McCrery.
Here.
Randy Poe.
Here.
Sharon Robinson.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Steve Trimble.
Here.
Lou Young.
Here.
Joanna Stevens.
Here.
Jude Dolly.
Here.
Amanda Ellis, here for Dr. Thompson.
Here.
Take care. You do have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brewer. Again, good morning, everyone, and I love the way we start the day with our good news items. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Poe.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get logged in.
I'm sorry, Dr. Poe. We'll come right back to you.
Okay.
Oh, Dr. Robinson is logging in as well. So are you ready? I've got a little blue back there with the little blue's name on it.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, Dr. Poe.
Thank you. It is indeed an honor to present a good news item today. Mandy Perez, a sixth-grade English teacher, Language Arts at Critten County Middle School, was named a 2023 Kentucky Teacher of the Year last month. Perez was named the Kentucky Middle School Teacher of the Year, and, you know, she's had an outstanding 18-year teaching career. As a child growing up in Union County, she recalls asking teachers for extra worksheets at the end of the year to take home so she could teach her little sister.
I love her.
Yes. Now, as the 2023 Teacher of the Year, Perez says she hopes to instill a love of reading in students across the Commonwealth. The Kentucky Department of Education and Valvoline, which co-sponsors the award, announced Perez's selection at the in-person ceremony on September 20th at the Kentucky State Capitol Rotunda, with our great Commissioner being there. We also recognize Kelly Gates from Hopkins County as the Elementary School Teacher of the Year and Amber Sargent of Wood County, High School Teacher of the Year. So the 2023 Teacher of the Year received a $10,000 cash award, while the Elementary and High School Teachers of the Year each received $3,000. All three of the Teacher of the Year winners were presented with a custom-designed glass award commemorating their accomplishments. Perez also received an opportunity to serve a semester-long sabbatical with KDE, and she will represent the state at the National Teacher of the Year competition. Perez, Gates, Sargent were among the 24 educators in the Kentucky Valvoline 2023 Teacher of the Achievement Award winners. The remaining 21 Teacher of Achievement recipients each got $500. So we want to congratulate all of our dedicated teachers. These are a great representative of thousands of teachers that we have across the Commonwealth. So we applaud them, and I think they deserve a round of applause from us for good news.
Excellent. It was a lovely ceremony. Randy and Patrice and Holly and Steve and I were able to be there, and it was just an excellent, excellent event. Tony Team, thank you. One of the things I really felt like this year was that there was just, it was paced really well, and there was a lovely recognition of all of the honorees, and it was just an excellent event. So the Governor was there, and it was just very appropriate, and it was a memorable event.
Yes. It always is. You know, it's one of the best events of the year every year.
I think so, too.
Patrice being a former Teacher of the Year.
And Holly. And Holly.
Holly, yeah, and Holly. What am I doing? You guys are so far over there.
All the fields, all the fields when that announcement is being made.
Okay, and then the next item to Dr. Robinson.
Well, this is another call to celebration. Our good news item concerns the gathering of over 800 educators from across the Commonwealth for the Continuus, the 2022 Continuous Improvement Summit. These are teachers and teacher teams from across the state using very specific, disciplined, data-driven processes to dig into problems of practice and to identify solutions to those problems and test them, gathering further data and making adjustments, and all in an effort to improve the services and the impact of instruction for students. So I particularly celebrate this item because I feel as though we are now celebrating the resources that we have to bring to our United We Learn effort. These educators, I think, exemplify those who have the commitment and the skill and the determination to address the most stubborn issues of practice. I mean, some of the teams recognized during the summit are dealing with things like neuroscience and behavior modification and getting the laundry done in addition to literacy and math instruction. All of these things that represent the attention to student needs and our responsiveness to those needs. So I want to celebrate, in particular, the 800 educators representing those across the Commonwealth prepared to take on this really important work, and, in particular, the schools and school districts whose projects and approaches were recognized by the summit. Do we have time to leave the names?
Certainly, certainly. And Dr. Foster's here, too. We might put her on the spot.
Oh, sure. If she's recovered from the event.
So please, Dr. Robinson, continue.
Well, we have Jacob Elementary School in Jefferson County. Regulators Mount Up. This is a project that was one of, associated with behavior modification. The Wellington Elementary School. This project is one that associates with students taking charge of their own learning and becoming more attentive and intentional about their own learning. Whitney Young in Jefferson County, they've instituted a continuous improvement loop as a way of identifying teacher needs for further learning so that teachers can in themselves model being a really intentional learner for their students. Fern Creek in Jefferson County, looking at just basic student needs, from being able to dress and participate in the prom to how do you get the laundry done in certain situations. DOS Elementary, DOS High School was looking at the, again, literacy and addressing the gaps in learning and how, we don't just have to go forward. There is a way to modify the use of time to address learning gaps. We were at James Farmer Elementary when we honored, when we honored one of our teachers. They were using the sound wall as an instructional tool to support literacy. Jessman County, sorry. Jessman County had two teams, looking at a targeted program for, to address issues around summer learning loss and also the, a continuous improvement powerhouse associated with leadership. And Camaro Elementary in Montgomery County, using a vertical planning process, again, to look at gaps. I just love, I mean, teachers, professional teachers do not ignore the gaps. They find a way to address and intervene. Martha Lanes Collin in Shelby County, an administrative team made a commitment to provide really honest, candid feedback to each other so that they can develop specific expectations associated with student needs. Seems like I missed one. Rowan County, keep your eye on the prize, learning intentions and success criteria in the elementary classroom. Again, looking at how students can become very intentional learners and take charge of their own, become the efficacious learners that we know they can be and just really leverage that pride and sense of dedication to learning. So you can tell I get excited.
Me, too.
And I don't want to forget Actonson Academy in Jefferson County, looking at improving writing instruction. So I love watching educators take charge of their profession, the work that they have dedicated themselves to, and I love celebrating it because it represents an important asset within our community that we bring to United We Learn. And Commissioner Glass, I do believe that this also represents a moment to recognize that KDE has the capacity to support this kind of professional teaching, and let's not overlook an opportunity to say thank you and acknowledge that important asset as well.
Excellent. Let's thank Dr. Foster, give her a chance to. Holly, I would just mention, we had a long conversation yesterday about United We Learn, but United We Learn is such a broad umbrella that continuous improvement is not lost for that effort. Student learning, personalization, student agency, self-efficacy, Dr. Poe mentioned, social-emotional learning, all of these things are beginning to coalesce really brilliantly in Kentucky right now, and we hear from teachers all the time that summits like these, where teachers learn from one another, are among their most coveted learning experiences throughout the year. So thank you.
I just need to quickly say Wellington Elementary is the Wellington Elementary in Fayette County.
Fayette, okay, yeah, I wondered, okay.
Switched for them, but thanks so much. I mean, this really has turned into a cross-agency summit. We started this summit in 2013 at the Little Marriott.
Yeah, on the second floor with 100 people, maybe, yeah.
And so, you know, now we are on the Convention Center downtown Lexington at 800. So it really has grown over time, and we really appreciate everybody's participation, and I think you're exactly right. It really just shows how continuous improvement has grown across the state throughout the years.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Robinson. The next item is with Ms. Adams.
The Department of Education named five Kentucky public schools as 2022 National Blue Ribbon Schools based on their overall academic excellence on September 16. The five elementary, the five schools and their districts were Cairo Elementary, Henderson County, Fancy Farm Elementary School, Graves County, Frankford High School, Frankford Independent, Long Branch Elementary School, Boone County, and Samuel Woodfield Elementary School, Fort Thomas Independent. The Kentucky schools were among the 297 public and private elementary, middle, and high schools across the country that were recognized this year. The program identifies schools in one of two performance categories based on all student scores, subgroup student scores, and graduation rates. Exemplary high-performing schools among the state's highest-performing schools as measured by state assessments or nationally-normed tests. Exemplary achievement gap-closing schools among the state's highest-performing schools in closing achievement gaps between a school's student groups and all students. The 2022 National Blue Ribbon Schools will be honored at an award ceremony in Washington, DC later this school year. I think this just shows, despite pandemics, tornadoes, floods, our Kentucky schools are rising to the top. So congratulations to these outstanding schools.
Excellent. Thanks. Ms. Bowling is feeling worse today. I'm really sorry to say so. She's not able to join us, so we've asked Ms. Dolly to share this good news item. No, Jude. I'm sorry, Jude.
Adding on to that, 43 Kentucky high schools are recognized with the National College Success Award. A total of 43 Kentucky public high schools have received the prestigious College Success Award from GreatSchools.org. Great Schools provides information to support parents pursuing a great education for their child, schools striving for excellence, and communities that are working to diminish inequities in education. Now in its fifth year, the annual recognition honors public high schools that excel at preparing students to enroll and succeed in college as determined by available data in each state. Kentucky's recipients are among 1,742 winners from 25 states that have successful records of graduating students who enroll in two- or four-year colleges, are ready for college-level coursework, and continue on to their second year. Congratulations to all 43 schools.
Thank you so much, Jude, and it's actually Ms. Stevens that we've asked to sub in for Ms. Bowling. No, who'd you tell me, Stacy? Ms. Bloodworth, sorry. Somebody over on this side.
So we are also celebrating Owensboro Independent and their success with their Grow Your Own staff program. So Kentucky counties have started several different kinds of Grow Your Own programs to combat teacher shortages across the state. So these programs recruit and train individuals looking to become certified teachers who are already connected to the schools and community. Last year, the Kentucky Department of Education announced 10 districts would receive a Grow Your Own program grant of $50,000. Owensboro Independent was one of these districts, and they took a little different slant with this in that they did not focus on students in their schools, but focused on classified people that were already working in their schools to get them certified. And through that program, they had seven people that became part of that program, and in this program, what happens is Western Kentucky University, the district, and the scholarship recipient each contributed a third to the tuition. And I think it's pretty exciting that out of the seven people that participated, six of them returned this year as certified teachers.
Excellent.
So programs like this are really helping make teaching a reality for individuals that have obstacles financially, and I think this is a really exciting program that they have here.
I agree. Thank you so much, and I love spotlighting these. I hope we never grow weary of this time. It just reminds us, the conversation we had yesterday, about how important it is to tell the story of the amazing things happening all across Kentucky. And Mrs. McCrery, to one of your favorite people, who always says you're the best kindergarten teacher that ever lived, so.
I am very pleased to be able to share this good news today. Our superintendent in Warren County, Rob Clayton, has been named Kentucky's 2023 Superintendent of the Year. He came to Warren County in 2013. I'm very, very pleased to say that I was on the selection committee during that process. He was an absolute shining star throughout that process, rose to the top very quickly, and he has continued to shine and do fabulous things for Warren County. Not only was I on that committee, I also got to serve as a teacher under his leadership for many, many years, so I've seen him in action. He is more than deserving for this award. He was surprised with the award during the KASA, Cassa Annual Leadership Institute, July 27th to 29th, that was held in Louisville. He started his career in education as an assistant basketball coach at Princeton Community High School in Indiana in 1992, and he's also been a science teacher, head track and field coach, assistant football coach at Pleasure Ridge Park High School in Jefferson County, head track and field coach at Mail High School in Jefferson County, assistant principal and principal of South Oldham Middle School in Oldham County. Now, interestingly enough, you'll see under his leadership, Warren County Public Schools has grown by 25% in our student population in grades K through 12. 103 different languages are spoken within the district. 103 different languages, 89 different nationalities, and he has embraced that diversity within our district. From the very start, Superintendent Clayton has espoused the merits of safety, achievement, and opportunity. I've heard that very, very often through the years of his tenure as superintendent. He's a strong believer of all three principles. It shines. Warren County is an excellent school district, and our leadership is one of the prime reasons. I sent him a text to tell him that I was going to be sharing his information on this award, and he immediately texted back to me, "Thank you very much. We have an incredible team." So once again, he shows the importance of the group that he has pulled around him to help support our educators and, most importantly, our students in Warren County. He rose to the challenge on many, many opportunities during our recent experiences with the tornado and the devastation throughout the district and turned Warren County into a point of delivery of services and truly committed the school district to serving our community. So he is most deserving of this award. So congratulations to Superintendent Clayton.
I just want to, yeah, chime in to Superintendent Clayton is an outstanding leader. I had to privilege, in 2013, being the Superintendent of the Year, when Rob actually was starting, he had a lot darker hair than that picture there shows.
That'll do it, too.
That's right. But he does exemplify everything that was just said about him, but much more than that. He's not only a leader in Kentucky, and he currently also serves as president of the Kentucky Association of School Superintendents. So he's sharing that leadership across the state, but he's also sharing that across the nation. So we do wish him well in the national competition, but he exemplifies what a superintendent is and does. Being there, growing 25% in the fact of where Warren County was, and they had great leadership before, but he's taken them to a whole new level. And Warren County is seen as a leader across the Commonwealth, and that's because of Rob's work and what he does outside of Warren County. So I just wanted to add.
Thank you. And Dr. Woods Tucker, you may already know this, too, but I, one of the first things that Rob did when he came to Warren County was to establish the process of equity scorecards. It was the second that I knew of after Fayette County in Kentucky, and he has been really intentional about embracing diversity, as you mentioned, Patrice, in the work that he's done there. So many congratulations to Rob and the whole Warren County team. All right, with us today is Dr. Thompson's professional better half, Dr. Amanda Ellis, to share, he is in a foundation meeting at this time. He'll join us a little bit later, but for his report today, we have Dr. Ellis.
Good morning. Thank you. So just to give a couple of quick updates, I have, I'm not sure what Dr. Thompson shared yesterday, probably all the things, but we have been really busy with community conversations today, being one of them, really just embracing the collaboration across the state of K-12, business and industry, community leaders, to really embrace the importance of not just higher education, but just better livelihood, better lives for our Kentuckians and what it takes together of what we can do. We've had great visits so far in Louisville. We met with Dr. Polio to talk about their goals at JCPS, the Louisville Rotary. We've also had great conversations at Elizabeth Town Community College and the things that they're doing to provide for the workforce and partner with business and industry. We got to visit Meade County, which this facility is amazing. Meade County's facility is amazing, and as we were walking through and really just learning about the connections between K-12, higher ed, and our workforce, you know, one of the things that Dr. Thompson and I were saying as we were walking around is, gosh, we wish we could normalize this for all students because there's great relevance and meaning in what we're doing and why we do what we do. And so we've just learned so much through each one of our visits, and so that's why we're calling them community conversations, just to learn more and elevate the good in the state and how we can collectively work together. And so the other point that rolls into that, the work that's going on with the continuum, we finally, after almost two years, got to meet face-to-face, and so we had a great turnout, great conversation. Of course, we had about 30 people, and majority of that time was spent in conversation around really using our state levers collaboratively to really focus on strengthening the pipeline, the P-20 pipeline, so not just in one area, but specifically in that transition to post-secondary, also looking at how early we start with advising, how important it is that students are exposed early and often to career opportunities and how to reach those goals and that they are worthy. And then, once they are in a higher education setting, whatever that may be, how do they thrive and survive? And so those conversations were extremely rich. We take that feedback, along with all the other stakeholder feedback, back to our work groups. So just so you know, there's revisions to the dual credit policy coming, and what is so beautiful about that is we have higher ed and K-12 on the same committee, working together, giving input on how it's working and what's not working, and then how we can build out resources for help to implement and advise students, because that is the most important piece. And so that work is going on as well. At CPE, we also have the Innovation Scholarship Program. It's for traditional documented students who may be refugees or from different countries that are offered scholarship for higher education opportunities that is underway, have great partnerships going on along with KIA, so that's an opportunity for students. And we also have grants to address our healthcare needs, and so you've probably heard a little bit about that. There's a whole coalition of healthcare workers in our healthcare industry, working on offering opportunities through higher education to meet those career demands, especially with nursing and all the different positions and things that we need filled in our healthcare industry. So that is also going on, so lots and lots of exciting events happening, but I think the most exciting is that it's really taking a broad perspective. It's not just living in the land of higher ed, but it's really looking at that whole scope of just economic mobility, improving the outcomes for our citizens in Kentucky, and how we can really come together to strengthen it across the board. So that's a brief update, and I appreciate the time.
So you guys aren't just hanging out at CPE?
I wish. I wish we could just hang out every now and then.
No, you don't.
I don't think that that's happened since I started. I don't know.
Excellent. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Ellis? All right. Thank you so much for being here. The next item on our agenda is a report from the Secretary of Education and Labor Cabinet, and Secretary Link was not able to join us, and often we have Lieutenant Governor Coleman, but she, too, was unable to be here today. So she's provided, her chief of staff, Susan Reber, has asked us to share some brief updates on behalf of the cabinet. The first one, the Kentucky Workforce Innovation Board, also called the ELC, and the Cabinet for Health and Family Services are working to develop the Family Resource Simulator to analyze benefits cliffs. The ELC is reviewing proposals by vendors to analyze the effects of the benefits cliffs on the workforce when work supports are lost for jobkeepers in certain salary, at certain salary intervals. This can change the trajectory of families and their financial stability and growth as they can better identify workforce opportunities as viable options. She also noted that Everybody Counts effort out of the governor's office, who will be rolling out data and additional information on Everybody Counts in the near future. She noted on the flood recovery efforts and attached a communique, there's a couple of attachments to this email. If any board members would like to have those attachments, just let us know. This communique regards a recent trip to Lecher County. The lieutenant governor was able to meet with the superintendent and staff there. Commissioner Glass and I were able to do the same thing, so he may say a little bit more about that in his report as well. She noted kyworks.ky.gov, and this is the launch of the OEA's website, OEAAS's website, and the All Services Handout, also as an attachment to highlight services provided by OEAAS. And then lastly, My Story Reimagined Summit. This is an adult education event, open to the public, and she encourages people to continue to access the free GED option, which you may recall the governor provided for last year, maybe, or the year before. So if you have any questions about this, let us know. We're happy to follow up with Susan and team if you want more information or copies of those communication pieces. And many thanks to Susan for providing that report. And now to our very own Dr. Glass for the Commissioner's report. And now, to our very own Dr. Glass for the Commissioner's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll begin just by touching on a couple of items that we discussed yesterday, one of which being my evaluation. At the end of that, Madam Chair, you turned things back to me and asked for any remarks and I really didn't have any. And I just wanted you to know after I reflected on that and had a chance to read the document that all of you put together, how grateful I am for the support that I get from all of you. And I was really overwhelmed and embarrassed by the attention and the kind words. And if we ever have the opportunity to renegotiate my contract, the evaluation is going to be for thirty seconds.
You were squirming in your chair yesterday.
Yes, but thank you. So, I just wanted to make sure that you hear from me how grateful I am for the opportunity to do this work and to work with all of you. Also, on the discussion that we had around United We Learn and communication around that, I could have and should have asked Tony to talk about some of the efforts that her team has underway around communication related to United We Learn. And just so you're aware, we do have, through using some of our COVID relief funds, added an additional communication person focused on United We Learn. So, there are efforts around that. You see elements of it really all around you that are related to that, and that's an ongoing effort. In addition to the capacity that we've added at KDE around communication, we also have to mention the statewide network that's being developed around United We Learn and deeper learning that's through the co-ops and into every district in the state. So, that's a significant communication support mechanism as well. So, just after reflecting some on our conversation yesterday, I just wanted to make sure that we discuss those items. Shifting gears and thinking about our area technology centers, the fifty-state operated ATCs continue to provide rigorous career and technical instruction to over sixteen thousand students this term. The ATCs are working to promote career and technical student organizations, CTSOs, which offer co-curricular resources and opportunities for students in the form of leadership development through activities, community service, and competitions. And on September ninth, the Lieutenant Governor was in Mayfield to dedicate a group of tiny homes, which have been built to provide temporary housing for tornado victims. The Mayfield Graves County ATC Electricity and Carpentry Classes were recognized by the Lieutenant Governor for their work on the project. In addition, the Mayfield Graves ATC Carpentry Classes partnering with the Fuller Center for Housing to build two new homes for tornado victims in Mayfield. Construction scheduled to begin the second week in October. The electricity program will complete the wiring for several new homes and rebuilds in the city of Mayfield this school year. Shifting to Eastern Kentucky, Hazard Community and Technical Colleges serving as a temporary location for the Breathitt County ATC, which was badly damaged with the flooding that took place this summer. The HCTC Hazard Community Technical College staff invited Breathitt County ATC students to participate in their annual back-to-school bash. Knott County ATC started school on Monday, September nineteenth, and Knott County High School. Renovation and repairs of that ATC are also underway with tentative completion in February of 2023. And also mentioned, as Chair Young noted, we had an incredible visit to Eastern Kentucky where we were able to see some of the flood damage and recovery firsthand. We do continue to meet with the flood-impacted superintendents on a regular basis. At our last meeting just yesterday, they noted how much progress they had made in restoring school services. They're all in session now. It really is an incredible effort to get them to that point. And they noted how they wanted to continue meeting and having conversations together. And so, we're going to keep supporting that. Their next challenge really is around long-term damages to buildings that will take more time to recover from and housing instability in their communities, especially with colder weather coming and concerns around places for people during the holidays. So, that will be our focus for our Eastern Kentucky flood-impacted districts going forward. Shifting to the Kentucky School for the Blind, KSB currently has an enrollment of seventy students in both residential and dorm students. The Bill Robey Track and Field Games were held on October fifth. Elementary students from KSB, Jefferson County, visually impaired preschool services, Indiana, and Ohio, and Tennessee also participated. Track and Field athletes attended the Tennessee Track and Field Invitational on September sixteenth and seventeenth, and eleven athletes competed against schools for the blind from Tennessee, Ohio, Illinois, Missouri, and Indiana. Misty Everson has been hired as the outreach consultant for deaf-blind services, working closely with the consultant from the Kentucky School for the Deaf. Everson will provide services and technical assistance to school districts in the southern region of the Commonwealth. Shifting to KSD, KSD welcomes several new staff members this year. Assistant Principal Phoenisha Jones is a former educational recovery leader and the Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning in Fayette County. High school math teacher Doug Sharp comes to KSD with thirty years' experience in the classroom. Food Service Director Laura McKenna has fifteen years' experience in the restaurant industry and has already made a huge impact on meals at the school. American Sign Language Specialist Samantha Fowler has joined the team to provide ASL instruction. And lastly, School Resource Officer Todd Davis has joined the team as well. Two robotics coaches have been invited to the California School for the Deaf to attend robotics training through federal funding from the Alabama Institute for Deaf Blind. Kava Buckley is one of the Teachers of the Year finalists. KSD is proud of Ms. Buckley's accomplishments and the amazing teaching and learning that takes place daily in our classroom. She pushes students to high levels of learning. And KSD student Bentley White presented to the Joint Committee on Education Focused on Team Kentucky Mental Health Initiative last month, and KSD is proud of his advocacy and leadership as well. And we also want to recognize and congratulate April Piper, who's recently been promoted as Director of State Schools. And so, she'll be supporting both the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind in that new role. So, congratulations, April. I will turn things over now to Byron Darnell, Associate Commissioner. Dr. Darnell will update you on some of the work that the EPSB has been undertaking. One of the goals that we had between the State Board and EPSB was greater awareness and collaboration across the two boards. And so, one of the ways that we hope to foster that is by having Dr. Darnell briefly update you on things that the EPSB is working on.
Excellent. I love it.
Thank you. I'm hearing the Steelers Wheel Song, Stuck in the Middle with You. I feel like we're here. I think that's a metaphor for a lot of other things, but.
Don't quit your day job.
In all seriousness, my continued admiration and gratitude for your leadership. And I just want to state, you know, Michael Fallon talks about love your people. And every time I am out, I am working, meeting, at national meetings, I brag on this State Board and just how fortunate we are to have you all guiding us, leading us, standing for this profession. And I also always commend my colleagues and peers at the department because they are outstanding. So, I just share my gratitude for the outstanding leadership that is in this room and at the department at large. But thank you for just a chance to give you just a brief update of what is occurring with EPSB. We had our meeting on Monday and it was the first in-person meeting since February of 2020. And that was a joy to actually be and interact as we are today. And it certainly made the meeting a lot more expeditious. But just some highlights that may be of interest to you all. One important information item that was presented came from client management from ETS, came to the meeting and just presented a couple of areas. He showed us just data around pass rates in terms of praxis performance in the state of Kentucky, just as a general frame of reference. But then, he also provided the board and myself with information about options that other states are considering at this time in terms of what the assessment is to gain entry into the profession. And so, we learned about their performance-based assessment, which is called the PPAT. So, it is more of a performance-driven mastery type of assessment. So, the board gained at least some initial information about that as an option. He also shared that some states are working with a standard error of measure. So, he presented data to us that would show if there was a negative one standard error of measure within the cut score, what that would do to the current test takers and how many more that would potentially allow in. So, of course, it varied and there are many, many tests, but it did show and give the board some examples of how that would widen perhaps individuals through the praxis. And then, he also just shared a couple of other states' examples, the Montana's being the one that I think really kind of pirked a lot of interest. And they are working on a multiple measures approach. And essentially, what they're doing is they have a total scale of seven points, and this comes from three data points, and that consists of their GPA. So, for each of the three components, I believe there are four points that are available in the scoring. So, their GPA is one consideration, their student teaching performance is the second consideration, and then their praxis score is the third consideration. And essentially, they work toward a total of seven points. So, it was just, it was wonderful conversation. We had an opportunity to just dialogue with ETS. And naturally, they being our most intimate partner in this assessment process at the time. But just to update you on that, that will be continuing, and EPSB staff will also be providing further information as we move toward the December meeting and continue with the dialogue around options that the board can consider moving forward. We've also been very fortunate to begin doing work sessions. So, we were able to have a work session on the Sunday before the Monday meeting. It was scheduled from one to five, and I think we initially thought, I don't think we'll be here till five. We went till six. You all know how this goes, but I think it just, it shows what's needed in an opportunity to just gather, learn, and talk. So, I'm thankful to them because their time is extremely precious. But we'll continue that also for the December meeting as well with the work session prior to the actual board meeting. We were also, or rather, going back at the July eleventh meeting, EPSB approved regulations setting the standards and requirements for the Option Seven and Option Nine alternate routes to certification. So, fulfilling the obligation of the board to promulgate those regulations, and they have been approved. And then, regarding the newly minted, if you will, Option Nine, the board approved two programs at Monday's meeting. They approved a program for Lincoln County Schools and Whitley County Schools, and both of the school districts will be partnering with the University of the Cumberland's to sort of be the initiators of the Option Nine program and be the first out of the gate, if you will. So, two programs approved, and we do expect that there will be more proposals coming prior to the December meeting as well. Naturally, there's a lot to work out with Option Nine. You know, it is a bit contrary for the parts in making it fit, but you know, that's what we're here to do. I will say, and I think Dr. Glass has been very gracious to have these conversations, we have not only the regulatory and statutory requirement to support the alternate routes, and we do, and also say we need to be innovative and we need to provide as many avenues as possible to allow talented people to be educators in the state of Kentucky. However, it is also always cognizant to keep in mind that from 2016 to 2021, there were just a little, or I'm sorry, I can give you a specific number, there were eight thousand four hundred and sixty-three candidates certified through all alternate option routes. So, while those individuals are extremely important, it just gives a little bit of perspective with the total forty-two thousand six hundred-ish certified teachers that we have across the state. But we'll continue to work with the alternate routes and certainly do our best to support them so that they can be successful. Also, happy to announce that we have eighteen Do-Go Teach KY ambassadors that were announced this week. They are champions of the profession. It is a selective process. It is an application, and we're honored to have them. And they will be out in their regions and they will attend recruiting opportunities that occur, that are within their vicinity. And then, finally, just want to say that we continue to provide praxis assessment support through the Kentucky Academy of Equity and Teaching, and we're approaching around three hundred thousand dollars in support that has been granted to individuals that have applied through that process. And so, just wanted to update you on that as well. So, appreciate the chance to just give you a little bit of information.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. I love the addition of this conversation as part of the Commissioner's report too. And for the board's information, Dr. Robinson and I had a chance to meet with Justin Mitchell, Chair of EPSB, and Sarah Weedman, Vice Chair of EPSB, a couple of times. Thanks to Todd for orchestrating that and with kind of a two-pronged purpose to get to know one another as to, in some ways, brother and sister, boards that govern different regulations related to the teacher workforce, along with all of the work that we do as the State Board. So, building those relationships was one of the original reasons. And then, we also wanted to begin discussing legislative priorities, especially as it relates to the educator workforce pipeline. So, we've had two of those, one virtual and one in-person, good conversations, and we have pledged to continue meeting like that to keep those lines of communication open and to find ways that the State Board and EPSB might coalesce around those big ideas where together we are better. So, thanks again for that opportunity. And Dr. Darnell, Dr. Glass, we're also there, as well as general counsel for both teams. Dr. Poe?
A question, or not a question.
No, please.
Love the fact that you heard, you know, in and around the performance, and I hope that in Kentucky, we moved to that particular model. I know several years ago, we had this prior conversation. We had math students from UK and other places, all with 4.0s, great teaching, but the praxis test itself did not line up to what they're studying at the university until they took a study course and had to pay extra. So, I hope that we eventually move into that because we looked at other states at that time and they were moving towards that. So, I hope we get there quicker than late.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, thank you for that. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, that multiple measures conversation is really important. So, yeah, I love it.
Yeah, because the courses that students take in college for the teaching and the praxis does not necessarily match up. And that, so then, they got to take a refresher course and pay six hundred dollars. But yet, we lose our math teachers to the industry because they say, why do I take a study test for six hundred dollars and I'm going to make sixty thousand starting over here in thirty-seven after I take a six hundred dollar test?
So many wrinkles in that garden hose. And I've been able to tune into a few EPSB meetings over the summer and spring, summer, and into the fall, and I know that's heavy on their minds as well as they begin exploring what it might look like, what an alternative future might look like in terms of regulations related to the assessment part for teacher certifications.
It's good to hear that.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, so, we're having our dessert first this morning, all the way through. Really excited to turn this over to Dr. Glass to facilitate the presentation of the 2022 Kelly Award for Business and Education Partnerships.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joseph W. Kelly served as KBE member from 1989 until 1998 and provided exceptional leadership as its Chair for seven years. He was a strong leader in the fundamental early years of implementing Kentucky's school improvements, school improvement efforts related to the Kentucky Education Reform Act. A respected business leader and education advocate, Kelly knew firsthand the critical role the business community plays in supporting Kentucky's public education system. His career exemplifies the significant contribution that members of the business community are making in support of Kentucky students. This award is given in the fall of each year to a Kentucky businessperson or business who has partnered with a public school or district to provide outstanding leadership that promotes school improvement and student success. Criteria for the award include creating or sustaining strategic partnership between a business or school or district that leads to improved student outcomes, including but not limited to post-secondary success and workforce outcomes, and significant contributions to a school or district that leads to, or likely will lead to, increased or improved student educational opportunities or improved educational, post-secondary, or workforce outcomes for students. At this time, it is my honor to announce that the 2022 Kelly Award for Business and Education Partnership is Mr. Mike Hesketh. I would like to take a few minutes to share what his nominee. I would like to take a few minutes to share what his nominator said about his outstanding contributions. Michael Hesketh is the president and owner of Superb IPC in Shelbyville, Kentucky, and carries a copy of the Shelby County Public Schools Profile of a Graduate wherever he goes. You have it with you now, sir. There you go. He is instrumental in creating, I'm glad that he did, because that would have been bad. He is instrumental in creating connections with the Shelby County business community and Shelby County Public Schools with the goal of fulfilling the competencies set forth in the SCPS profile of a graduate. Over the last six years, Mr. Hesketh has established himself as a strong advocate for Shelby County and the educational community. As a Shelby County business owner, he serves the community, as the community co-leader of the Shelby County Local Laboratory of Learning, on the Kentucky Anna Works Regional Workforce Board, and has joined the Advisory Board for OVEX Head Start Program. Working with our student achievement team from the central office, Mr. Hesketh has joined our journey of creating, creating work-based learning for our students. He eliminated all obstacles to employment and welcomed Shelby County Public School students into his facility so that they can continue their learning in a non-traditional classroom setting. Numerous industrial maintenance and welding students have honed their skills under the guidance of skilled employees. As their mentor, Mr. Hesketh requires our students to reflect and elaborate on their experiences and how it is leading to proficiency and the six competencies of the Shelby County Public Schools Profile of a Graduate. In March 2022, Mike wrote an article for Kentucky Teacher about his participation in the Shelby County Local Laboratory of Learning and stated, quote, "With our schools as the hub of community engagement and full participation by students, parents, and teachers, and our broader community, we will prioritize building networks of trusting relationships and partnerships that share in the responsibility for each of our students' growth. Our prototype begins with the entire community embracing the six elements of the profile of a graduate as qualities and capabilities that we will all aspire to master. With everyone engaged, we anticipate advancing an environment of active engagement where our community, families, and students all participate in mutually beneficial activities and projects that provide our students with the experiences where they will learn and demonstrate these valuable attributes of a graduate." And now we'd like to invite our guests up, along with Ms. Susan Dougal and Superintendent Sally Sugg, to also congratulate Mike. Could y'all please come up where Tony's sitting there? And we'd love to hear just a few remarks from you.
Well, I'm, I'm truly honored to be here today. Thank you, Chair Young, Commissioner Glass, board members. I wasn't familiar with the Kelly Award, so I had to do a little bit of research. And I saw the distinguished group that have received this in the past, and I'm, I'm humbled to be a part of that group. I'd like to recognize very quickly just three groups that have made me successful in, in this role. First is my wife Wendy. We just celebrated our 39th wedding anniversary this past weekend, and I couldn't do this without her support all the way through.
Hey Wendy.
Secondly, I have the privilege of being in Shelby County and working with Susan, Dr. Sugg, and Mr. Coleman, who runs our Career and Tech Ed operation. They invited me in several years ago. They've been huge partners. The, the profile of a graduate was developed at that time with, with input from the community. We, we talked about what we were really looking for from a graduate, from a learner. We've, we've talked about that description, and, and these traits are exactly what we look for, not only from our graduates, but from our, our employees. So we're excited about branching this out. I, I had the opportunity, as mentioned, to be on the L3 group for Shelby County. Our, our prototype is going to be taking this to the community. And it's a reflection of what a great group, the Shelby County group is, because I do believe as we went down the road of where we were going to go with the rollout of our program with the school as a hub and all, we were going to focus somewhat internally on the process. And we recognize that if, if the community doesn't fully understand and embrace deeper learning and a different approach, that they, we would likely not be successful. We'd have students that were graduating, but the rest of our structure not ready. And so we are taking this to our community. Our prototype is to take this out into our community. Chair Young joined us for our rollout meeting where we had some great participation. So I'm very fortunate to have the Shelby County School System and the great staff that's there, amazing partners, and we're excited about what we're doing. Lastly, I'd like to, to thank and recognize all of you. Commissioner Glass and I met at a meeting at our area technology center a year or so ago. I remember going to it because I said, what, what are we doing? What's the purpose of the meeting? And, and the answer was Commissioner Glass wanted to listen. He came here to listen to what we were doing. So you are clearly walking the walk, not, it's not just talk. The empathy interviews that we've learned to do, the process that we've gone through, you all have listened and, and you've taken this on. It's not because it's easy. It's actually quite hard to go to a whole different model of deeper learning and different accountability. And as a community member, we're very, very thankful that you're doing that. Your insight to try the prototypes, ours being to take it to the community and then share with the other members in our cohort. Logan County is doing one, if I understand correctly, on, on a dashboard, which is something we've talked a lot about. How are we going to measure this? How are we going to communicate this? And the fact that they're going to go through that process and develop a dashboard, share the results and the learning and experience with us is, is going to be very powerful. So I, I'm, I'm delighted to be here. I'm honored to receive this. I thank you for your insight in taking this forward, and I look forward to working with you with the full implementation. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam.
I would just, see, I don't need to say anything. The thing about Mike Hesketh that amazes me is that when you listen to him, he sounds like an educator. And he is an educator. He's an educator in Shelby County and our community. He educates our students, but he also educates his colleagues. He is a great advocate in the business and industry community, and because of him, we're able to reach our community in places that we would not before. And what he said earlier about the research, when he talked about researching the Kelly Award, what makes him stand out is he also researches everything we talk about. So when we're in an L3 meeting, a local laboratory of learning meeting, and he doesn't understand, what do you mean by accountability? He watches the video about assessment and accountability made by one of our students 20 times to understand and pause and rewind. So ask, he asks great questions. I know that he has been working with Dr. Poe on a state committee on the Portrait of a Learner. And I, I hope that you saw that benefit as well, that, that the questions that he asks make things happen. So we are honored to partner with him and are very proud of his work.
Dr. Suggs?
I'll just follow up with a couple of things. Mike didn't tell you he also has the profile of a graduate in Spanish in his portfolio there.
Excellent.
He, as, as has been said, he is an integral part of everything we do. And I've often joked that he needs to be on the payroll because just about every meeting I'm in, he's there as well. But I'll, I'll follow up and finish with just a very quick story. And this is where the rubber really meets the road and why we do what we do and why he does what he does. A couple of years ago, when I came to Shelby County for the second time, we were very interested in expanding our work-based learning program. And through that, met with parents and students, and one particular young man just stood out. He hadn't really found his niche, hadn't found an apprenticeship or a partnership that was really working for him. And some teachers and administrators were really trying, but it just hadn't worked out. And so I got to know his father very well. He called me and he was very concerned about his son and just not only the work-based learning program, but also his personal affect. Just all of that was in decline. So I called Mike. And within 24 hours, he had that student and his father in his personal business. And it's just an example of, it doesn't have to be a huge business. This is a local businessman that is an entrepreneur and took under his wing a young man, and I can say now, he is thriving. He is playing football. He is an active part of all of the activities in his high school. And his parents are thrilled, we are thrilled. And that's just one personal story about how this work really makes a difference.
I love that story. All right, turn it back over to the Commissioner. I just want to say how, what a delight it has been to get to know Mike over the course of the past year. In addition to the Portrait of a Learner subcommittee of this group, he's also been really active in the Advancing Education Coalition, which has now morphed into the United We Learn Council. And so you will indeed be one of the framers of Kentucky United We Learn when we look back on the history of this initiative. And I, I told somebody this the other day when I saw Mike at OVEX, we need to have the chamber run a campaign with a bunch of T-shirts and stickers that say, be like Mike. Every community should have its very own Mike times 10. So thank you. We sincerely appreciate working with you every chance we have.
Thank you. Congratulations again, Mike. On behalf of the board and the Kentucky Department of Education, we congratulate and honor you. We do have an award for you. It's a lovely box of chocolates. There was a confusion and Dr. Todd has been into them, so we're sorry about that. But I'm joking, of course. We have a lovely award for you that will help commemorate this. If y'all could come up and we'll take some pictures.
Thank you, Susan.
Here you go.
Thanks, Mr. Coleman. Thanks, Dr. Suggs.
Permission to clone Mike?
Yes, yes, absolutely. If you could start working on that, that would be really helpful. And I'll start the T-shirt press.
I love Mike.
Excellent. All right, excellent. What an amazing morning and what a great tribute to such a deserving awardee. Thanks again to Committee Chair Patrice McCrery for all the work that leads us to today to have a chance to honor, to give honor to whom honor is due. The next item, as we move into action items, is approval of CSI Turnaround Vendor. And you can see that KDE Associate Commissioner Kelly Foster and Policy Advisor Matthew Courtney, Dr. Matthew Courtney are here with us to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So today I come to you all with the task of approving the vendor list for school improvement turnaround services. Senate Bill 120 of, in Senate Bill 12020, required these changes to the work. So let me give you just a little bit of the background. The Kentucky Board of Education is required to approve a vendor list of at least three vendors that have documented success at providing turnaround diagnosis, training, and improved performance of organizations. The KDE received five applications. Three were not scored as they were returned as incomplete, and two applications received scores of meet expectations or higher. And so the vendor list that we're bringing to you today consists of Central Kentucky Educational Cooperative School Improvement and Turnaround, and the University of Virginia Partnership for Leaders in Education. And you'll notice in the staff note, we kind of walk through the process. The call for proposals was between July 1 of 2022 and August the, August 14th of 2022. And so you can see in the staff note, the process that was used, the scoring, we had a cross-agency team. No one from OCIS was a part of that process. And those are the two vendors that we bring to you today, as well as KDE will continue to be an option for school districts.
Excellent. Thank you. Super technical kind of item here. Do you have questions for Dr. Courtney or Dr. Foster? Okay, excellent. Thank you. Hearing none, I would ask that the board entertain a motion to approve the CSI Turnaround Vendor List. Do I have such a motion?
From who?
Thank you, Dr. Todd. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Poe. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And thanks for the legwork on that. So I know you guys have been preparing for the topic ahead. Before we do turn our attention directly to the charter school regulations at hand, I want to begin by acknowledging that this is a controversial matter for us as a state board. It's controversial at the state and at the national level, and I know we all have our own opinions and concerns as we move forward. As a board, we are constantly engaged in policy discussions on how we improve opportunities and outcomes for kids. That rich conversation comes excitement about ways that we can act that we believe are in the best interest of the children and families we serve, but at times we find ourselves in conflict with our roles and sometimes our own belief systems. This is perhaps one of those. We have to acknowledge our authority and our role in a three branch of government system. I know that some of you may not support charter schools in Kentucky, or you may not support the specific governance and funding structures you see set forth in these regulations. I think that's a fair assessment of where we might find ourselves individually this morning. However, I need, feel the strong need to remind ourselves, that we must remind ourselves that this is a legislative branch of government in Kentucky that makes our laws. The Kentucky General Assembly passed House Bill 9 during the last legislative session, and now the executive branch here, the Kentucky Board of Education, must implement that law. Unfortunately, House Bill 9 was very prescriptive and leaves little to be decided on the part of this education policy body and across the state. The Commissioner has drafted proposed regulations for our consideration this morning that fulfill our obligation in House Bill 9 to promulgate regulations consistent with that specific legislation. While I believe there are constitutional uncertainties with House Bill 9, it is up to that third branch of government, the judicial system through the Kentucky Supreme Court, who has consistently held that statutes are generally afforded the presumption of constitutionality until determined otherwise by a court. That is, it will be up to the judicial branch to determine whether House Bill 9 is in fact constitutional, not up to this board. With that in mind, I'll turn it over to Dr. Foster and Dr. Courtney to begin our discussion of these regulations.
I might interject.
Please, Dr. Glass.
Before Dr. Foster and Matthew begin, just building on the comments that you just made and something that I said to the local superintendent's advisory committee as this was being considered by them, there are numerous policy challenges that come with this statute, and there are numerous avenues that, for constitutional questions and weaknesses that are in the statute that also will appear in the regulations, because our regulations are matching the statute. We made the legislature aware of those constitutional weaknesses with the legislation that they were proposing. They did not act or change any of the legislation as it went through the process with the General Assembly. Because the department has limited resources and the legislature has also structured the legal framework around this where it is not they who will be sued over those constitutional challenges, it will be this board and it will be this agency and it will likely be me, or the people who will be sued over the constitutional challenges that appear in the law. Because of that, and we haven't seen any lawsuits yet related to the constitutional weaknesses that are in this law, but because of that, we will not expend the department's resources defending those constitutional challenges if they are brought. So I just want to be clear that what we're doing here and what, what we felt the department's responsibility was, what my responsibility was, was to bring to you regulations that align with the law, because it's what the legislature directed us to do. You now have the responsibility to promulgate those, those regulations, but there are likely to be- Assembly. Because the department has limited resources, and the legislature has also structured the legal framework around this, where it is not they who will be sued over those constitutional challenges, it will be this board, and it will be this agency, and it will likely be me, or the people who will be sued over the constitutional challenges that appear in the law. Because of that, and we haven't seen any lawsuits yet related to the constitutional weaknesses that are in this law, but because of that, we will not expend the department's resources defending those constitutional challenges if they are brought. So I just want to be clear that what we're doing here, and what we felt the department's responsibility was, what my responsibility was, was to bring to you regulations that align with the law, because it's what the legislature directed us to do. You now have the responsibility to promulgate those regulations. But there are likely to be legal constitutional challenges to it, to you as a board, to us as an agency, to me as a Commissioner. And while, again, we haven't seen any lawsuits, if they are on those constitutional grounds, we will not stand to defend it.
Thank you. I appreciate that additional context. And I do want to make sure that you understand that my remarks are not intended to thwart conversation. We have ample time this morning to discuss these issues. Please feel free to do that. I just wanted to make sure we understood what the guardrails were in terms of our responsibility as state board members. So we will engage in that conversation.
Great. Good morning. Thank you. With the original charter school legislation in Kentucky, the Kentucky Board of Education created four regulations, and those regulations are currently housed in my office. And we have reviewed those regulations and made the changes that are required by House Bill 9. And what we'd like to do at this point in time is walk you through those changes in each regulation. We are actually bringing four to you today to amend, and then four to pass as an emergency. So I'll turn it over to my policy advisor, Matthew, and he is going to walk you through those changes. And you can follow along in the slides. We tried to set it up where you could easily see in each reg, the suggested changes.
Thank you. And good morning. Before I start our presentation, I want to do just a little housekeeping to help you navigate the nearly 200 documents that go along with this presentation. So as Dr. Foster said, you're going to see today both ordinary versions, amendments to the existing ordinary versions of the regulation, as well as new emergency regulations. So we have four regulations that are being amended, four emergencies. Here's the rationale for that. The House Bill 9 states that by the following school year, so 2223 school year, Jefferson County, as well as a group of districts or Northern Kentucky University, are required to solicit and open charter schools in their regions. In order to do that, we must promulgate emergency version of the regulations so that they can go into effect in time for them to meet their statutory deadline. So a delay in that regulatory process would prevent those districts from meeting their statutory obligations. So that's why you're seeing today emergency and ordinary versions of the regulation. The two versions of the regulation are identical. So we're going to present them to you in pairs. And sort of the game plan is I'm going to just go through each one, each set together. We'll pause at the end to take questions on each regulation pair as we go through. We want to recognize and acknowledge that these regulations were promulgated by a different set of members of the Board of Education. And so there are likely to be questions related to both the existing language and the revised language. And we're happy to engage in that conversation with you today and help you understand the ins and outs of these regulations that you're being asked to move on today. I'll also say the ordinary regulations that we're bringing, they will continue through the normal process. So there will still be opportunities for public comment. There will be another opportunity for you as a board to hear that public comment, to hear a statement of consideration on the ordinary versions of the regulation. So we'll go ahead and begin. Our first pair here is 701 KAR8010. And this is related to the student charter school application. So this is the application that a student would use to apply to enroll in a charter school. In Section 1, a handful of changes, again, all of these changes are made to comply with House Bill 9. We have added some language around enrollment performant, enrollment preference, rather, to just sort of clarify and match that language that's in House Bill 9. We have removed the definitions of a startup public charter school and the definition for traditionally underperforming. That language was removed from House Bill 9 and is no longer necessary in the regulation. In Section 2, we have removed some enrollment preference language that was removed from House Bill 9. So this was an enrollment preference related to the startup charter schools and some of those processes on how students could be sorted into those schools. It was struck from House Bill 9, so it's been struck from the regulation. In Section 4, we have added some language here around what happens for enrollment student, of students who cease to reside within close proximity. Again, you'll see that this statute, KRS 1601591, is cited here in this. So this is aligning completely to House Bill 9, which amended that statute. Further down on the second bullet here, again, we've changed this language, enrollment boundaries, to include resident and non-resident enrollment policies. That was a change made under House Bill 9. Charter schools must create their own enrollment policies related to resident and non-resident enrollment, so we needed to align to that. The final bullet on this slide prohibits the charter school from requiring a family member or a person with custody or charge of the student to volunteer or make payment to attend. So the original language just said family. We've added that further clarification to include individuals with custody or charge of a student in that prohibition. So just a handful of changes to that one, really. Again, that's all about how a student would apply to enroll in a charter school. I'm happy to pause now and take any questions.
Dr. Poe?
Just a question, because as you said, there's 200 documents. It's hard to keep up with, so I need your expertise. So the purpose of the charters, or the thing, was to provide educational opportunities. So is there a preference for students of low income or academic performance, low academic performance from somewhere else? Do they get a better preference to enroll? Or is it just open lottery, you pick, and we're not getting at the purpose of what the charter school was enacted for? Can we not put a preference in there? That it should go to low-income students as a preference, or from students of a school that's performing low?
So all of the preferences that are included in the regulation are statutorily mandated preferences. And there's some different preferences depending on what kind of charter school you're creating. So a brand-new charter school that is a school that has not existed in another form prior, that school would create enrollment preferences as part of their application process. So let's say that you wanted to open a school and specifically serve students on the autism spectrum. Then you would declare that enrollment preference as part of your application procedure. There are also enrollment preferences related to urban academies, which is a new type of charter school created by House Bill 9, which is kind of like, think about like the school in your neighborhood. So sort of the closer you are to the school, the more preference you have to be able to enroll in that school. The same for conversion charter schools. If a public school, a group of family members within an existing public school seek to convert that public school to a charter school, then students who had existed in that public school already would receive enrollment preference. So those are all statutorily defined, and that's why you can see in that language where we have not described the preferences, we've just cited where they are in the statute.
We can't, we can't make a, this board in promulgating the regulations can't say as part of a charter application that these students should be given preference for a charter school operation, or authorized, to be required to do that.
I'm going to ask Todd Allen, our general counsel, to weigh in on what you are allowed to do.
So I don't think the House Bill 9, or even the previous version of the charter school statutes, provided that level of authority to this board to act. It speaks in terms of preferences that can be acknowledged by an authorizer or by an applicant, but it doesn't go far, so far as to provide this board the authority to limit charter schools to only those preferences, if that makes sense.
Great question. Thank you. And that may apply to several of these regs as we move forward in terms of somewhat limited governance authority.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, the thing that concerns me in there of that language, just as part of discussion, is that proximity to a new thing creates that situation of that charters are being approved for a specific cause or reason. Because when you do proximity, and you put it right next to new development like they have in Florida, then that community gets it, and the other communities sitting next door to it that might need it can't get in because of that proximity clause.
I think that's a really good question. Matthew, you might help us understand, that applies to the urban academy model, right?
That is correct.
Could you help us with that definition a little bit? Describe that more.
Sure. So let me flip to that here in my notes so I can get it exactly right.
And this is new to House Bill 9?
Yeah.
The specific designation as urban academy for students who live within the proximity of a charter.
But in, you know, talking, you know, in some other states, you know, you create a complex, and then they have a school there. And that was provided as, you know, becomes a private school for a new community that's developed within a section or whatever that's taken.
Land urban development model. Right, right.
Thank you for your patience as I wait for my computer to...
I mean, if we can't do anything about it, we move on. I just want to stay back.
I do actually want to make sure that we're clear on this kind of new model.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. So Urban Academy is a new model that was created by House Bill 9. And it is defined as a public charter school that includes an enrollment preference for students who live in close proximity to the school as defined in the charter contract. So functionally, what does that mean? When a charter school goes to an authorizer, completes their application, we'll be talking about the application in a moment, they will declare in that application that they are seeking to be an urban academy. In doing so, they will provide an enrollment preference definition where they're basically going to kind of draw the lines and say, within this boundary, we consider these students to be close proximity to our school. And so those students will have enrollment preference. We will enroll those students before we enroll students who live outside of our established enrollment boundaries. So I kind of think about this as, like, if I'm close enough to walk to the school, to ride my bike to the school, I'm probably going to be eligible for enrollment in that urban academy. If I live a 30-minute bus ride from that school, I'm probably not going to be within that enrollment preference.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm trying to imagine what that might look like. Are any other questions on the first pair of regulations related to authorizing?
So does, I'm thinking of an urban setting and a transient population. Are there guidelines set in place that when new individuals move into that area, they will have access?
So the authorizer and the, they work that out in the application process. We wouldn't have any authority to determine that, but depending on each charter, the authorizer, they would have that in their contract.
Dr. Todd?
Would you point out to us as we go through this, which ones will be calls for constitutional potential action against this board?
We defer to Todd to point those out for us.
So I think these are issues that Dr. Glass outlined in his presentation to the LSAC. And there are more big-picture issues that I would say are tied to House Bill 9. These regulations incorporate the requirements of House Bill 9. But a few of the things to look at for a constitutional challenge, one, first of all, the House Bill 9 requirements provide that for a school district with 7,500, over 7,500 students, they do not have the ability to enter into an agreement signing off on essentially the applicant's, the charter school applicant's application to the authorizer. For smaller school districts, most of our school districts with 7,500 or fewer students, one of the requirements of the application is that the local school district sign off on it and say that we support a charter applicant in this area. Again, 70, over 7,500, they don't have that ability. So that calls into question whether or not that's local or special legislation that is prohibited by the Constitution. That will be a potential issue for the court to determine. I believe that's our 16 largest school districts in the state, do not have that option that the remaining school districts do have. Another issue that will likely be an issue of challenge is the forced transfer of local tax levies and revenues from a school district to the charter school. House Bill 9 requires that portions of locally derived taxes that the local school district has levied its citizens and told them that they're for educational purposes, it's now forced to transfer to the charter school under this new legislation. I think that will also present a potential question, especially if it isn't that local school district that's authorizing the charter school. So for example, if it's another authorizer, the local board that noticed its community and collected that tax is now going to be required to transfer a portion of it to the charter school. There's some other provisions as well, more big-picture, that may become challenges. The Supreme Court has interpreted our Constitution to say we must have an efficient system of common schools. So a question exists as to whether or not operating parallel system of, systems of common schools meets that efficiency requirement. There may be challenges that funding for this system of schools, whether or not they are common schools, and if they're not, our Constitution provides that if we're going to have schools that are supported by public funds other than common schools, that's an issue that has to be put on the ballot for the voters to decide, not for the General Assembly to decide. So that's a summary of some of the big-picture constitutional questions that we may see.
You'll see a lot of those issues in the next separate section on the new reg, 8:050. And I know the superintendents, of course, have this significant concern in that this will be the first time that local property taxes, local taxation, would have to be diverted, perhaps outside a local community. So that will be, that's, I think, causing perhaps the majority of the angst at this point. And we don't know how that will play out.
Okay. Thank you.
Proceed.
All right. Our next regulation, 701 KAR8020. This is related to valuation of charter school authorizers. So this regulation tells us how a charter school can become a charter school, as well as houses all of the requirements and expectations of that charter school authorizer. So again, all of these changes were made to exactly align to the statute. We've not made any additional changes beyond what we were required to make. So in Section 1, this is our definition section. We have added a definition for district of location. That's a really important new definition in House Bill 9 that Robin Kenny and her team will talk to you about in the new funding regulation. But essentially, the district of location would be the school district boundaries in which that charter school is housed. So we've added that definition. We've removed definitions for regional achievement academy and regional achievement zone. Those two categories of charter schools have been removed from the law through House Bill 9. We have reinserted here a definition for a startup public charter school. And so let me just explain a little about what that means. Startup public charter school as a category of schools was removed from the statute. But we still need language to refer to a charter school that was not a school prior, so a brand-new facility. And so we have defined that here as a public charter school that did not exist, as a non-charter public school prior to becoming a public charter school. So this would be a brand-new facility. And then, of course, we've added that definition of urban academy here again, because that has now been incorporated into the application. In Section 2, we have added a new requirement by, added by House Bill 9, that the authorizer is required to ensure the establishment of a food program. So all of our charter schools will be required to provide food programs following the same procedures and rules as their public school, traditional public school counterparts. We've added just a few words here into subsection 8. So the applicant, I mean, the authorizer must provide a timeline for submission, acceptance, that's a new term, House Bill 9 added, review, decision, and appeal of the request. And they must include clear deadlines. So those are two phrases, the word acceptance and which includes clear deadlines, were required to be added by House Bill 9. to be added by House Bill 9. Moving to Section 4, we have struck some language related to those regional achievement academies because that is no longer a category of charter schools, so that language is no longer necessary. We have added language regarding the memorandum of understanding that our general counsel mentioned a moment ago, where districts with fewer than 7,500 students must enter a memorandum of agreement as part of the application process. So, that language has been added here. And then, we struck this review and approval language because that was struck from House Bill 9, so it has to come out of this one as well. Section 5 deals with that startup charter school language. So, remember, I said it used to be a special category, now it's not. We use that word in a couple of other places, that's why we added the definition, but this is striking all that language that was removed by House Bill 9. And then, we have, at the bottom bullet here, we struck revenues to fall below 2% and exchanged that with language to say is expenses to exceed 98%. That was done, again, to provide better statutory alignment.
Can I ask a question on this part?
Sure.
Because I didn't understand this part when I was reading it. So, when you say expenses to exceed 98% of the total projected, what happens at that? Because it says the authorizer shall, but then there's nothing else after that. What shall they have to do if it gets there? Because here's where my concern is coming out. Let's say I'm a local district and we have to meet the statutory 2%, but let's say I have to transfer my funds to an authorizer and I fall under the 2%. What happens to me as a school district there? This board has to take action. But what, what action is taken against that authorizer if they fall below that? Does the author, because you have the person who's operating the charter, then you have the authorizer. So...
So, if it's an authorizer other than a school district, like Northern Kentucky University, for example?
You're asking if they fall below that 2% mark?
Seth, what do they have to do? Like, our districts have to, you know, meet with Robin, put out a plan, monitor it. But what shall they have to do? Because I didn't see that in the regulation.
Matthew's going to read you the shall, what comes after the shall.
Yeah.
Pull that up.
Yeah. Thanks for that question. So, a pretty lengthy list, which is why we've just included the change in the slides, but you'll see this is on page 22, if you're following along in the regulation documents themselves. So, in this instance, the authorizer shall require the charter school to implement a cash management plan approved by the authorizer. They shall commence in a more in-depth review and an audit, if necessary, of the charter school's financial, budget reports, expenditures, and revenues. They shall request financial management assistance from the charter school from the, from the department. So, we would be able to provide some technical assistance. And restrict the charter school's expenditures to require an authorizer's approval prior to expenditure of charter school funds for the remainder of school year. And keeps going here.
But basically, you know, in a regular school right now, if we fall below the 2%, they can't get themselves out. The state eventually takes over the situation. In this case, does the authorizer, do they have skin in the game and they have to take over that school, and are they responsible for that? Or can that school just close up, then those kids are out on their own, and they got to re-enroll in a public school and everything else?
So, kind of both. So, the authorizer in authorizing that charter school, they're taking on that regulatory oversight burden. And so, there, so whereas a traditional public school district, we play that role for that school district. If their budget falls below that threshold, then we work with that district directly. And you've seen those, those come before the board. For the charter school, they're going to work directly with that authorizer who owns that contract, that charter with that school. And so, all of that is negotiated into their contract, what that will look like. The regulation requires all the things I've just listed, plus several more things that are actions that the authorizer is permitted to take or required to take. There is also opportunity for a charter school to close. And so, if a charter school decides that it is no longer solvent, and it is not in its interest to continue serving those students, House Bill 9 and the various statutes do prescribe a protocol by which that school can kind of wind down, and those students can be placed back into traditional public schools.
And it happens.
Often and none. The biggest thing is the authorizer, in talking with some potential authorizers in Northern Kentucky or whatever, they don't think they have that responsibility, but they do have that responsibility. That's what I wanted on the record, that the authorizer, if they enter into that contract, they have a legal obligation to make sure that school works, and they can potentially be held accountable if that school goes under, according to that shall and that long list. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that is correct. They have all oversight responsibility.
There's a long list of an authorizer shall throughout this regulation, and they'll be legally bound by this regulation.
Thank you. I just wanted that clarification.
And Chair Young, that was all my comments on that regulation, so I'm happy to field other questions.
So, we've heard about enrollment and now authorizing. Ready to proceed to the third? Thank you, Dr. Courtney.
Okay. 701 KAR 9030, this is the charter school appeal process. Only one change being made to this, this existing regulation, which is the timeline by which you have as a board, if you hear an appeal, so charter school goes to an authorizer, an authorizer declines to enter into a contract, they appeal to you, and you now have 45 days from the receipt of the notice of appeal to issue a written decision. So, that is an extended timeline that we saw under House Bill 9. So, that's the only change being made to this existing regulation.
Questions about that 45-day period? Okay, one more, Matthew.
Okay, here we go. 701 KAR 8040. This regulation houses all of the rules for a conversion charter school program, so taking an existing public school, converting it to a charter school. Only technical assistant, technical amendments have been made to this regulation, so no content changes. But recognizing that none of you were on the board when the original regulation was promulgated, we wanted to give you an opportunity to ask other questions.
Oh, Dr. Todd, yeah, feel free, go ahead.
How do the facilities work in this situation? They make application, they want to create a school, they need a facility, they need food services. How did that happen?
This is converting an existing school, this one. Are you asking a more general question?
I was asking more generally, yeah.
Okay.
So, all of those details would be negotiated in that charter process. So, in terms of a conversion with this regulation, that local group of parents, they would petition the board to convert that public charter, that public, traditional public school into a public charter school, to give it different oversight and management. And then, they would negotiate the use of that building, any leases, contracts, facility issues there. Same is true for any other type of charter school. They are still bound by all of the existing regulations related to student health and safety, related to civil rights and accessibility. So, they're required to have accessible bathrooms and ramps and elevators, if necessary, and all of those other building requirements. So, no type of charter school is exempted from those rules. But what that looks like in each charter school will be negotiated individually with the authorizer through the application and contracting process.
Public school is converted to a charter school. Who owns that property, then, that building?
So, they'll negotiate the use of that facility, and likely, that school will continue to own that public facility, and it will be leased or allowed to be used by that charter school.
From the district.
From the district.
From the district, yes.
Pardon me, yes, through the, through the district. So, all of that will be negotiated. What that actually looks like could vary. So, you could theoretically have a district that says, we really welcome you to take over this facility, and so, we're going to allow you to do that, and you're going to pay $0 in rent. That could happen. Likely, there will be leases negotiated, but title of the property does not transfer.
Okay. So, then, would the charter school who is leasing that property, would they be responsible for maintenance and any repairs to the school?
All of that would be negotiated during the application and contract process.
So, they would have to provide for insurance, because, you know, I guess that's one of the legal questions. Right now, there, there's some immunity in a regular public school, but that same immunity does not necessarily exist in that charter school, does it, or does it?
I'm going to send that one to general counsel.
You know, we're not, we're not quite sure how that looks in Kentucky because that issue hasn't come up before the courts yet. It would be certainly one, you know, in that situation, any charter school would argue that they do have immunity, and we'll see how the courts decide that matter. So, as far as the facilities question goes, as Dr. Courtney indicated, it's really a matter of negotiation between the charter school and the authorizer local board. If they want to use all of that facility, what that lease would look like, whether they're going to provide all of the maintenance, or whether they negotiate that the local school district is going to continue to mow the grass because the campuses are connected with another school building. All of those details would be things that they need to work out in their contract.
Including liability insurance and property insurance.
And a lease payment, because of course, there's no decreased amount of funding, which we'll get to in a minute, that would go to a conversion charter school versus any other charter school. So, a lease payment would certainly be part of the negotiation.
Forgive me, I should know this, but I, it's just occurring to me that I don't think I've asked this question. Is there any role for a non-school board authorizer in the conversion charter process?
I want to ask Todd Dewan on that one, too. I don't think that there would be.
I can't imagine that Northern Kentucky University could tell.
So, the, so the, it does require a petition of parents, right? So, the parents have to petition, that petition form is included in your materials, they petition, they petition to their board. So, I don't know that there's a direct role. I think in sort of practice, there could be some external influence and support from someone who, maybe an agency that wanted to help facilitate.
As more than one charter school, yeah.
Yes, a management company, something like that. But there would be, I don't think there'd be any direct involvement, but indirect influence, I think, is certainly possible. And then, we'll defer to Todd if he needs to correct me on that one.
Give me a second to look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and no rush on that. It just hadn't occurred to me before. Would you like us to watch you or move on? Thank you, Todd. Just jump in when you're in. Yes, Ms. Bloodworth.
Is there a percentage of parents that have to sign the petition?
There is. And let me, I want to quote it exactly.
As you're looking up, and as you're looking up that, I've got a similar question to that. If, if, in that Northern Kentucky area, if I'm an authorizer and I authorize one, but then I, as you're looking this up, if there's a percentage of parents, I can actually go back to that authorizer, would they have to authorize that or not? Or are they just allowed to be selective in the schools that they choose to authorize? Because of, as you said, as a public school, if you create one and...
Yeah, the conversion petition comes to the local board because it's already a school in existence. So, Todd's checking, but I don't think there would be a way that one of those non-board authorizers, City of Louisville, City of Lexington, Northern Kentucky University, would be able to engage directly in a conversion.
That's what I'm asking.
I think that's right.
Dr. Courtney, we believe it's 60% of parents.
Thank you. Meredith was able to find it before me.
Any other questions on the first two pairs, the four pairs of regulation, regular regulation and emergency? Mr. Allen?
So, the regulation on conversion speaks to the conversion being filed with the local Board of Education. It doesn't speak to any other authorizer. And then, the local Board of Education has to go through, through some steps to verify that conversion petition. So, the way this exists for a conversion charter school, the only authorizer would be the local Board of Education where the current public school sits.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve emergency regulation 701 KAR 8:010E, 701 KAR 8:020E, 8030E, and 8040E, and the counterpart amendments to those same regulations in regular reg. Do I have such a motion? We have a motion from Dr. Robinson. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Bloodworth. At this time, I'll ask for a voice vote, but if any member does want to explain their vote, feel free to do that. All those in favor of the motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Can we explain our vote?
Yes, please.
I explained my vote in relationship to what Commissioner Glass said at the beginning. And we have a requirement to do this, but I really see serious flaws in how this is going about. And, you know, we would, when we, when this board and the legislature did the original concept of charter schools, it was a good concept to allow local boards to make those decisions. I think that these regulations unfortunately take local control out of the picture, and we have locally elected board members to make these decisions, and they should be the ones making those decisions. So, I do think that there's going to be constitutional challenges. But as you stated earlier, we have a responsibility to do our part, and then let ultimately the courts will decide that other part. So, I thank you for stating that earlier, Commissioner Glass, because I think that sums up a lot of opinions across the Commonwealth on this area.
Well said, Dr. Poe, and I share those exact sentiments.
Chair Young, if possible, I'd like to do a roll call vote, just because we had some abstained from voting, so I want to be sure that we had a significant number to pass.
Okay, let's do that, and then offer that opportunity to explain if anyone so feels led.
Joanne Adams.
I vote yes, and I'd like to explain my vote, that I am voting yes to, because of my responsibility to carry out these regulations, not because I believe these are the best regulations for our schools.
Ollie Bloodworth.
Yes.
Patrice McCrery.
Yes.
Randy Poe.
Yes, and as stated previously.
Sharon Robinson.
Yes.
Lee Todd.
Yes, I would like to commend the commissioner on the effort he made with very detailed suggestion about how to handle this legislation, which was ignored. And I respect the comments that he made previously, and I vote because we're obligated to do so.
Steve Trimble. Mr. Trimble, I believe you're muted.
I vote yes.
Oh, you're good. Yes, now we can hear you.
I'd like to explain my vote, please.
Please.
By voting yes, that doesn't mean that I support charter schools.
Thank you.
Lou Young.
I vote yes.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. And let's do a roll call on the next one as well, please. Thank you both so much. We appreciate digging into those details. At this time, Associate Commissioner Robin Kenny and her policy advisor, Matt Ross, will join us in an overview of the funding... join us in an overview of the funding regulation, which is, of course, more detailed. And you may want to definitely open this one in the portal so that you can follow along. But I have asked Robin to put together the slides in such a way that will help you see the statutes that are referenced in the regulation by way of context for this. And also joining them is Che Ritter.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning. Unlike the previous presentation by Dr. Foster and Dr. Courtney, this is a brand-new regulation, and we do have sort of the same thought process as far as having an ordinary regulation and then an emergency regulation. So I'm not going to go through that again. The explanation that they provided really sheds light on why we have these two things. We have an ordinary and an emergency because by school year 2324, we expect to have charter schools' approved applications contracts in place. So that's why we're doing the emergency regulation. If we think back to 2017, when the charter school bill was first passed, there were no provisions at that time to even address funding. Fast forward to 2022 and the General Assembly session, they did make provisions through House Bill 9 to provide really pretty specific and detailed provisions in the statute about how charter school funding would look like. So as we thought about the best way to share information about the regulations, we thought it would really be most helpful if we focused on the statute itself, so you can really see exactly what the statutes require. And then you'll see a lot of, in the regulation, we are referencing back to those statutes, or as Kelly and Matthew also referenced. We can go to the first slide. Yes. Make sure that, okay. So this is about the emergency and ordinary regulation. The regulation conforms to the requirements of the authorizing statutes to govern the funding calculation. Next slide, please. Let's look specifically at what the statute requires this board to do. The language in the statute says the state board shall promulgate administrative regulations to govern the calculation and distribution of funds due to public charter schools from school districts, the schedule of that distribution of funds, and the imposition of fines if there is late distribution of funds. Where do we begin? With the statutory requirement that, as we think about charter schools and the various fund sources that they can receive, it's almost like they have a fork in the road. So in Kentucky, with the passage of this legislation, for purposes of local and state funding, the public charter schools shall serve as a school of the district of location. And you saw in the earlier presentation, this definition of district of location. That's basically where the charter school is going to be geographically located. Virtual schools are not permitted under the charter school statute, so this is where they are physically located. So for local and state funding, they become a school of that district of location. However, for purposes of federal funding, it looks different. In Kentucky, for federal funding, the public charter school shall serve as an LEA, a local education agency. For many of you, you're familiar with that term. It is where, used often in federal funding, but basically means a school district. So they will act and wear the hat of a school district when they are looking at federal funds, but for state and local funds, they act as a school underneath that local school district. Charter schools are eligible for both state and federal competitive grants, so as long as the charter meets those funding eligibility requirements, then they will, they will act accordingly under both of those. So let's start talking about the mechanics. How's this really going to work? So for average daily attendance, for SEEK funding purposes, let's start with SEEK. That is our state funding formula. And the department transfers SEEK funds to local school districts. So we would be transferring to the district of location as a local school district, and then the local school district will be transferring those funds to the charter school. The statute provides for inclusion of charter students in the attendance ADA, an aggregate ADA for transported students, and the statute specifically says, "in the same manner as any other public schools in the district, and shall be reported by the public charter schools to the district and KDE for purpose of calculating the state and local share of funding." So they're going to look very much for funding purposes for SEEK, like any other school in that district.
Does that include capital outlay?
It does not include capital outlay, and we'll, we'll get to that and just, we'll get to the, off the tops.
Okay.
Just a minute. The calculation of SEEK, of course, for, for our distribution of SEEK funds, we are always looking a year behind us as we calculate those amounts for our local school districts. For the first year of operations, and we'll get to this a little later in the presentation, it's going to look a little different, but we'll get to that in just a minute. Okay. So the distribution of the charter funding, and again, this slide, you see statutory citations in here, again, pulling straight from the statute. At this point, we haven't gotten anything into the regulation that we've added. We're all just following along with the statutory provisions. It starts out, unless a larger sum is provided, and that anticipates that the authorizer and the charter school could negotiate something different, but the district of location shall transfer to the charter school, and it uses the words "a proportional amount" of the following funds. And then you can read on the slide, the provisions in there. The provisions at that fourth bullet down, where it has some statutory citations, that is at-risk, exceptional students, and home hospital. So the, our add-ons as part of the normal SEEK process. Here's the part that Chair Young was asking about, not transferred. So off the top, that district of location will not transfer any local capital outlay and additional FSPK and other levies that really are to support the expenses of a local school district related to their school facilities. So all that comes off the top before anything is distributed down.
Can I have a question on that? And it kind of falls back to before. If I have an urban academy and I have selective enrollment in and around my location, and through the enrollment process, there are not children of special needs in there, does a district still have to send their portion of, a portion of special needs funding, or, not special needs because that's excluded out, but let's say gifted and talented money or anything else if they're not identified that way?
Yes.
Or do I just have to send a proportionate amount based on student enrollment of my district over there?
It's if they're identified.
Based on their exceptionality.
Yeah, they, so it's actual counts, as we get into the sort of general cycle as we're moving forward. Of course, at the beginning, they're going to be basing things on projections. So that's the first year that we'll talk about. There's some projections of those demographic types of students. But once we get into the general cycle after the first year, then they are submitting information, just like all the other school districts are submitting, on their actual counts. So if they don't have students that fall into those exceptional student counts, then they wouldn't receive funding for that. The other thing about the distribution of funds that's sort of off the top that I just wanted to point out, the statute does not withstand the SBDM allocation timing. So we know that SBDM and the timing of that, as the funds flow down from the district to their individual schools, the charter school allocation will happen before that happens. So distribution of funds to charter schools will happen before the SBDM allocation happens.
March 1, May 1?
I'm sorry?
The March 1, May 1?
Yes.
allocations, yeah.
Moving forward, again, still staying on the distribution of charter funding, on transfer on a proportionate per pupil basis, yeah, that's easy for me to say. I feel like I want to shorten it to like PPP or P cubed or something. So this, this is going to be for funds allocated for tier one or tier two. And then, again, reading straight from the statute, this slide is still reading straight from the statute. There's a little phrase at the end of that first section that says, "or pursuant to any applicable federal statute." It seems a little out of sequence here because we're talking about tier one, tier two, and then you have this little phrase at the end. It also is a little perplexing because for most, generally for most purposes, we've already said, for federal funding purposes, they would be acting as an LEA. So this will have to kind of, as we roll into it, we'll find out more. What does this really mean? What kind of federal funds would actually be coming to the district of location that then needs to flow to the charter school? I think we'll just have to kind of work our way through that a little bit.
And do we get those answers from the Legislative Research Commission or...?
We can, we can ask about legislative intent there, trying to get more clarity around that. But for most cases, we're going to have the charter school actually applying for those federal funds directly. Even in, as funds come to the department that would support like our categorical amounts, for federal funding, charter schools act a little bit differently because, number one, they don't have census counts. Think how many of our federal programs rely upon census, right? So they kind of have their own separate federal funding kind of path anyway.
So basically on bullet two there, if I'm a local district and I'm negotiating taxes in lieu of their, on an IRB, and we state the purpose of what those taxes are for, it doesn't matter, you have to use them, descend to this charter school, if I'm reading this correctly. So you're then in violation of whatever your statement of collection of purpose of those taxes were. So that's one of those challenges that we'll probably see correct up. Because when you do your IRB, you're, just like when you levy your tax rate, you're saying what you're going to use those taxes for. But now, you're not necessarily going to use those taxes according to this, but the stated purpose of why you did the IRB to begin with.
So that is a potential, potential area that could see judicial challenge, yes. On that second bullet, it talks about all taxes, and as Dr. Poe is saying, and payments in lieu of taxes, transferred to the district. So what, what does that encompass? So that might be property taxes, tangible taxes, occupational taxes, utility taxes. So it really says all taxes, all local taxes that are collected. And of course, those come to the district through various paths. You know, some people, some districts collect their own, some come to them through their local sheriff as a collecting agency, so it's all local taxes. I added a slide about proportionate per pupil basis because that's sort of what we were talking about for these, the last slide that we just talked about, the, related specifically to the local taxes. And one of the questions that we have received at LSAC, and we received from others, is this concept about how, how does the math work on this? So a proportionate per pupil basis, and here's the definition, multiplying an amount of funds, so your amount of funds, however much that is, by a fraction. The numerator is the average daily attendance of the public charter school, and the denominator is the average daily attendance of the school district of location. So the question has become, what if the charter school's ADA, the numerator, is larger than the denominator? Then you have, you have a factor of more than one, right?
So those students are going to get additional money than a traditional public school student.
Mathematically, it could, it could work out that way. Now, as we talk about local taxes as the example, right? So local taxes don't really come into school districts on a per pupil basis, right? So it's hard to really draw that very bright line to say, that student that's in your local school district, they're getting more for that student at the charter school because of this multiplier. Because those, they don't really come in that way. But mathematically, you could have a factor of more than one.
Which could potentially be another challenge that we're talking, because, I mean, common schools is that you're treating on an equitable basis across the board, but in this particular case, you could be creating an equitable situation. Because let's say, for example, I start a charter school, more than likely, kids are going to be there, I'm going to have 96 to 100% attendance, where I could be in a high social area and my attendance is 90%. So obviously, that's going to be a larger fraction than one.
Okay, let's talk about transportation for a little bit. The charter school and the authorizer have some options for transportation. There is a definition of a proportionate per pupil transported basis, so you kind of get into the same discussion for transportation that we just had earlier on the local taxes. They can decide between the two of them to work it out, that the district of location would actually transport those students on behalf of the charter school. So if you have charter school students on the same bus routes, they can negotiate and actually end up in a situation where they're agreeing to pay for that service. Or they could act very much like a school within that, and they can utilize the same systems. We would do the T-codes, we would do the counts, we would do the, the routes, so they can act very much just like another school. Or they can decide that they don't want to transport any of their students at all, and if they decide not to transport any students, then there would not be any funding that would go to the charter school by the district of location. So they have some options for them to consider as far as transportation.
What, what happens in the ca, I mean, you know, we thought this about, you know, we're up to maybe about 70% of funding that the state is providing in a local district. So it doesn't matter what percentage that the state, or locally, if we decide to spend 30% more than we're being reimbursed by the state, that, that 30% additional is, you have to take funds from that, too. You can't just take it straight from the 70% of state funds.
I think it's, I'm sorry, I don't know if this is on. I think it's based on the SEEK transportation funding that the district receives from us. So what you all would do on top, or I should say, what a district does on top would be outside of that calculation. Yeah, I believe that's my understanding of it.
Because, I mean, you know, we're nowhere close to being 100% funded on that formula. So if you're, if it, it's kind of like a, to me, a district doing a charter transportation, we're paying more than the state's willing to pay for transportation, so why should we get penalized if we're doing something? Because otherwise, then you start reducing your routes, and, and everybody suffers so that you're not spending out more.
Right.
Okay, we're going to keep going. Hang in here with me. Okay, now we're going to actually start talking. We've been talking all through the slides so far. We've been referencing directly to the statute. So all that we've covered so far is laid out by the General Assembly in the statutory authority. This is the first time that we're actually going to talk a little bit about the regulation itself and a clarification, I guess I would say. So schedule of distribution. When do we transfer funds? When does the district of location transfer funds to the charter school? So the statute says, "The funds identified for transfer by that district of location shall be transferred throughout the school year according to a schedule determined by the state board. The scheduled dates shall be within 30 days of the dates of state disbursement of funds to school district." So we know for SEEK purposes, we transfer SEEK to districts of locations once a month. So accordingly, the district of location would then transfer to the charter school within 30 days. In the regulation, we have just indicated that the district of location shall transfer state and local funds within 30 days of receipt of funds pursuant to KRS 157410, which is the SEEK statute. And districts of location... And districts of location should work with their finance officers to determine what that distribution's going to look like for efficiency. So, we know your local funds for local school districts, they come in at all different times, right? They're not neatly coming in on the first day of each month or the 15th day of each month. But as long as you transfer within 30 days of that disbursement to you as a district of location, you then transfer to the charter school. You could bundle those together so that you're not making every time you get one, you're throwing it out. But you need to make sure that when you bundle things together, you're still getting it out within 30 days of all those receipts.
What happens the year that the states have done a deficit and you withheld SEEK, not knowing that final payment at the end of the year? What happens in that scenario?
When the district of location receives it, then they transfer it on.
But based on the revenue, I guess, of an authorizer, the budget at the beginning, if they're authorizing $8 million for a school, let's say, but because of SEEK revenue, or because of revenue shortfall in the state, and we're, our last SEEK payment isn't going to be higher, can that school district cut that allocation portion that goes to a charter school? Or is it the, we got to pay that amount no matter what, based on the projections at the beginning of the year?
You would pay, for SEEK, you would pay a proportional share of what you receive the district of location receives.
Reduce the amount going to the authorizer. Or, yeah, well, the...
Because the authorizer is not really determining what SEEK is.
Well, yeah, but unfortunately, in this, while they have an outside authorizer as opposed to the Board of Education. So, if that authorizer authorizes $10 million based on this thing, they're committing a school district of location to a certain budget. If there's a shortfall on SEEK coming in, or SEEK transportation, or whatever, that's my question. If the authorizer authorized $10 million, but only $8 million's coming in through our collection of resources, are we, as a school of location, only required to send them $8 million versus $10 million if there's a shortfall? And there's been shortfalls in the state?
Sure, I think you're only required to pass along what you receive, that proportionate share of what you actually receive.
Only what you receive?
Right.
So, okay, so, if an outside authorizer authorizes $10 million, and that operator is spending $10 million and not paying attention to the shortfall that's coming into a local district, the authorizer, whoever authorized that is on that hook, for the $10 million expenditures, if there's a shortfall.
I think the issue might be in that first year that they're using projections for the first half of the year, but that catches up just like it does in a district with forecast SEEK.
Correct, but the shortfall comes in at the end of the year, not the six months.
Right, and usually after March, you know, that's when the department...
I'm just trying to, you know, clarify, so if I'm an authorizer, I realize that there are times when the state doesn't give us the proportionate share of revenue that we're anticipating. We, at the local level, have to reduce and be within 2% at that end of the year. I'm just stating, if the authorizer doesn't require that same operator to do that, they're on the hook for that, the local district is not. And your response was that, I only have to, I'm the local school district, I only got to give them the share of revenue I'm coming, so somebody else has to make up that $2 million shortfall.
Well, I think it's a lot like the district. They have to adjust accordingly, you know, unfortunately, late in the year is usually when it happens, too, after March, so...
We're also going to get, a little later in here, sort of a provision that we've added to the regulation about the authorizer with the assistance of KDE and the charter coming up with realistic budgets to start out with. Because that's really important for all of us, really. So, now, is that to say that an authorizer and a charter could enter into an unrealistic budget? I guess they could. I mean, theoretically, that's possible. But the goal for all would be to enter into a realistic budget at the beginning, not something that they think they would receive more money than what a school district, as the district of location, would receive. So, maybe we can clarify that a little bit as we roll a little further along.
Okay, I think, what just complicates it is an outside authorizer. If you're a local district, you know, you have control over that. If you're not a local district, I just want to make sure our local districts are protected against an outside authorizer authorizing their funds, and they have no control over that, of the revenue coming in, that they don't have to abide by the budget. Because right now, if an outside, if I'm reading this correctly, if an outside authorizer authorizes a charter for a certain amount of money, that authorizer is obligating a local school district to that fund that they're authorized.
So, the district of location can only pass along that proportionate per pupil or proportional share of what they receive?
So, I think a scenario that might help clarify this, too, is the local taxes. So, year to year, you expect X, you know, a million dollars in local taxes. You have a major corporation that fails and says, "We can't pay you this year," or "We're leaving town," or whatever happens. The district has to adjust pretty quickly to that, but you can only pass on what you can pass on. So, but it works the other way, too, which is if you receive an additional payment due to an audit from the Department of Revenue, those funds within 30 days would be passed, you know, passed on to the proportionate share, as you say, would be passed on.
So, I think you're also... The reason why I'm trying to point out, and I guess what I'm asking you is a point-blank question, is if an authorizer authorizes more money than that the local district receives, the authorizer is the one that's responsible for that, not the local district.
I think that'd be a matter of the contract, the charter contract, right? So, it would contemplate if the authorizer is...
But I'm a local district, I'm not authorizing that.
I don't, the local district only transfers what it gets, whatever it sees.
You can't overspend money, you don't get...
The charter contract would contemplate any shortfalls, right? What happens in the event of a shortfall? Whether or not that would be the responsibility of the authorizer, or whether or not the district would, or the charter would just have to adjust. But it's never going to fall back on the local school district.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay, for the first year of operation, this is where we're seeing sort of projections rather than actual. This is what we were talking about earlier on, where, you know, we're always looking at actuals when we do funding. But for the first year, for the calculations of amounts of funding by the district of location to be distributed by the charter in the first year, they're going to use projections. And those projections are going to be in the application. So, this is where we're talking about, how many students do we think we're going to have enrolled? You know, the statutes do encourage, I think it's encouraged, maybe that's not the right word, but they anticipate at least 100 students. You should be thinking of that for your budgeting and operations purposes, unless you're looking at some of those specialized categories of students. So, you don't have to go that high. So, it would be for 100 students in the application. Again, this is this application that comes into the authorizer, and that's going to be what they kind of build their projections of what their funding's going to look like. And so, that will be for the first day of instruction through December. And then, the district of location and the charter school are going to, in January, kind of look back and say, what really happened, right? How many students did I really have enroll? What did the demographics look like? And then, adjust in January to actuals.
And they'll have to use Infinite Campus, right?
Yes. Charter schools are required to use Infinite Campus, all the type of systems work that we use for all local school districts, SOAR and MUNUS and all that kind of stuff. Okay, next slide. Okay. There's also a provision in the statute about an authorizer's fee. And as we've noted, authorizers could be districts of location, they could be local school districts, but they could also be university as defined in the pilot project, it could be the city government. So, there are other types of authorizers. For each transfer of funds, the statute contemplates there will be up to 3% of the funds for transfer to a public charter school can be retained by an authorizer as an authorizer's fee. So, that's up to 3% that basically gets taken off the top before you make that transfer. If the authorizer does not include the local Board of Education, so it's one of those entities that is not a local school board, then the district of location transfers that authorizer's fee to the public charter school's authorizer. And that's for each of those transfers. If there is an appeal that comes to KBE, let's, and I think Dr. Courtney talked about that a little bit, if we have an appeal and it ends up at the Kentucky Board of Education, then the statute allows KBE to receive 25% of that authorizing fee to support for the There are also penalties for failure to timely transfer funds. For every five days late, again, this is straight from the statute, for every five days late, the failure to transfer results in a fine to the violator, and the statute says of not less than 5% of the total funds per funding period to be transferred. So, this is where we've included in the regulation, a cap shall result in the fine to the district of location of 5% of the funds. So, the statute says not less than that, and in the regulation, we have said it would be 5%. So, it can't be less than that. So, it's not going to be more than that either. It'll be 5% of the funds. So, that's one of the clarifications in the reg that is a little different than the statute. Again, we've talked about the ordinary and emergency regulation. Now, we're going to talk about, quickly, if we can just move to the next slide, there is two regulatory deadlines that we have inserted in the regulation, which are not in the statute, so I want to highlight these two. These, again, in both the ordinary and the emergency regulation. We have included as a condition of receiving funding, beginning with the 24-25 school year, so not the first year that the funding can be made available, but starting at 24-25, the charter school shall have an approved contract prior to February 1st preceding the charter school's first instructional school year. And even though, and again, Dr. Courtney and Dr. Foster in their presentation, they talked about the ability of an authorizer to come up with sort of the timeline by which they will receive applications and consider. It's really important, we believe, from the district of location's perspective, the authorizer's perspective, and the charter school's perspective, to have sort of all their ducks in the row and the contract negotiated and it finalized so that we can, they can collectively, along with the Department of Education, have the best chance of success of a smooth operations of their facilities and their instructional school year. So, the desire of putting in this February 1st deadline to access the funding is so that a district of location, as they're preparing their budget, they'll be doing that in the springtime, they would already know the exact contract of that charter school, and they can start budgeting appropriately for that. Also, it allows at the Department of Education us to do our systems work to get that new charter school set up in all of our systems so that they can start providing data and information to us, and as they start in the upcoming school year. We did not include this as part of the regulation for the 23-24 school year, simply because it's October now, if we have interested charter school applicants, then that doesn't give them much time. So, the department, in good faith, will be working to do all that on an expedited basis for this first year that operations could occur. But we really want to get those charter schools on a cycle so that by February 1st of the first year that they're opening, they'll have kind of all their ducks in the row, and everyone is informed about what that relationship is going to look like.
So, are those provisions different in the emergency reg and the regular reg?
No, they're the same. They're exactly the same.
This might be a good time to ask Todd to interject, to remind us that upon approval of the emergency reg, they immediately go into effect.
Once we file them.
Once we file them.
Which we intend to do before noon on Friday. That's the difference in an emergency regulation, is it becomes immediately effective once we file it with the Legislative Research Commission. The ordinary administrative regulations will usually take about nine months from the time we file them with the Legislative Research Commission for them to become effective.
And so, this provision, really, in the emergency regulation, it's in there, they mirror each other, the emergency and the ordinary, but it's really not applicable because it starts with the 24-25 school year. The second regulatory deadline that we have inserted is to help with our desire to really make sure that the application that's being submitted and being considered by an authorizer has realistic expectations of the parties on what funding will look like. So, we've put in a provision that says the district of location, with the assistance of the KDE, shall provide the charter school with a written estimate of the projected funding that will be due to the charter school through December of that first instructional year, on or before February 1st preceding the charter school's first instructional year. So, again, we would work with the district of location and the authorizer, too, if it's not a district, to make sure that we can provide any assistance and information of what that first six months might look like as they're preparing that application, and as an authorizer and a charter school are considering if they can really make this work. So, we've included just that provision for all of us to work together, to work on those projections together, giving everyone the most realistic opportunity to give estimates of what that first six months of funding will look like. Those are two provisions that we've inserted that are not directly taken from the statute, but we hope that'll make a smoother startup for that first school year. So, we've gotten to the end. Let's talk about next steps. So, there's a lot of logistics in here that is sort of behind the scenes. You know, if you're a charter school operator and the statute says you need to basically give us information in the same format as other school districts, you need to know about Infinite Campus, you need to know about MUNUS, you need to know about DASCAR, you need to know about SOAR, all the things that our school districts are very, very familiar with, but charter operators and authorizers may not be aware of. So, next steps that my office is working on, we're working on a guidance document so that we can talk about the mechanics of how you become a school within the Kentucky school system as far as interactions with the department. We are also going to prepare, for guidance purposes, a template for our districts of locations to be able, because as we walk through each of these fundings, and we do have this expectation that we would like to come up with projections, and then actual, it would be helpful, we believe, for district of locations to have sort of a template that they could put the numbers in, and we could say, "Go here, here's your number for your state funding, here's your number for SEEK, here's your number for what we are aware of from federal funds." That helps on the projection side, and it also helps districts feel a little more confident as they are calculating the amounts that then need to be passed down to the charter school. So, that's, those are two things that we're working on in my office to try to help authorizers, districts of location, and charter schools to make this as smooth as possible from a logistics standpoint.
So, if I'm a, you know, a regular district, you know, I guess 563 complicates that a little bit, in the fact that if I'm a, if one person authorizes a charter in a different county than the, some of the residents that go there, if I'm the, let's say, we'll use Northern Kentucky because that's the example there, so you've got a charter school in Campbell County... So you've got a charter school in Campbell County, but you've got Kenton County students going to the charter in Campbell County. The funds from Kenton County that only will transfer when that student enrolls over at that school, they're just losing their CEAC in federal portions, because they don't have that student. But they do not have to transfer any local funds over to Campbell County. So the Campbell County taxpayer of that location, that school of location that it's in, will have to pay for the additional expense of a resident from Kenton County. And Campbell County School, or whoever the, there, the county, or a local independent-
District of Location, yeah.
Does not have a choice on whether that student goes to that school or not, if they're not the authorizer, based on the guidance that we just heard from Kelly's-
That's true. So the district of location is the entity that is transferring funds, and it is their taxes.
Right. So, so in this scenario, you could technically have 100 students that live across the border be authorized across there, and that school system that didn't authorize it, but someone, an outsider did, could potentially have 100 students that that county's paying for now, because they got to send their portion, even though those, that 100 students weren't in that county.
The local portion, yeah.
I mean, we-
That's correct.
So-
And similar to House Bill 563-
Yeah, but that district is choosing to do it at that time, so they're, they're voting on it.
Yes, but the district is choosing to do that.
With this other type of authorizer, you could technically, let's just say I had a school district, I had 1,000 students. I could now have 1,100 students, and I'm not receiving more tax money locally for that. So now my proportion of tax money for those students are, is going to drastically go down in that scenario.
That's correct.
This is illustrated on Jace CEAC-
Oh, I know.
-page, when you see the per pupil spend, or amount available from local property taxation.
They, they, I mean, it's one of those things that obviously the, the people who passed this didn't think of the scenarios of, of local funding, transferring from one county to another county, of having students go over. It's one thing when a local board chooses to do that, but it's another one if I'm a local district, and I'm not making that choice, but an outside authorizer is making that choice, and now you're penalizing my students of that district.
Some might say your taxpayers.
Well, correct. The taxpayers of that district. Yes, okay. Just wanted to, I mean, I just, that's what I was interpreting, and just want to make sure that that's-
You're correct.
That's there.
And I'm wondering, Robyn, in terms of potential other regulations that will have to be changed when we settle into this, we talked about the regulation that governs, governs A1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 and 6, whether there might need to be another school designation. Has your team begun to anticipate what other regulatory, regulatory changes we might be looking at?
That one, we will look into. We're trying to determine if it, if we get its own classification, which is one possibility. We've also talked about whether we need two different numbers in our system, since in some cases, we're going to have them acting as a school under a district location, and then the other side, they will act as an LEA. So all my data governance people, close your ears, because that, that's hard for us to get our heads around, but we may have to end up in a place where we have two different numbers to kind of track that.
So, and House Bill 9, but let's, because you, we also heard from the other group, anybody that's less than, or over 7,500, so I could be, we're sitting, well, we're next to Warren County, so Warren County falls in that classification. Can you have an outside authorizer go into Warren County? I mean, it's only permitted in that one section in Northern Kentucky, so WKU couldn't be an authorizer in Warren County.
Right. No, that cannot, they are not an authorizer.
The, the other outside-
Well, who, who would be an outside authorizer in that county? So let's say the board doesn't, you know, they, they don't do it, but I mean, it says if you're a district more than 7,500, you don't have to have local board approval. So who's the authorizer in that case?
The local school district is the only authorizer in that case.
So they have to, they would have to approve and approve it?
They would have to approve it, no matter what.
Yes.
If it were approvable, right.
If it was approvable pursuant to the statutory requirements.
The only non-board designated authorizers are Northern Kentucky, City of Louisville, and City of Lexington, so far.
Okay, but, so if I have an outside, somebody, an outside management organization from somewhere comes into Warren County, so under this, Warren County could technically have a charter school next year, if, if a management company wanted to come in and say to the board, "You're going to do this," right?
If they meet the statutory requirements.
Well, right, yeah, everything we've set out, I'm just saying, that's, so there could be, I mean, this isn't about two schools, one in Jefferson County, one in Northern Kentucky.
Oh, no.
This could be 16 potential schools, I think.
Oh.
Well, you know, 16 districts, right. Unlimited numbers of things within those 16 districts.
Yes. Any other questions? Yes, Holly?
Was the 3% authorizer's fee out of the proportional per pupil, or was that outside of that?
It, it is for any funds that are being transferred to the charter school.
So not in addition to?
Yes, yes. 3% of that.
There is no governance over how that is used, that 3%?
Well, the authorizers do have specific statutory requirements of things that they need to make sure happen, so they'll, the 3% could be used for that, but it doesn't, Todd, it doesn't specifically say that.
I think they'll think of them as indirect costs of doing the business.
I think another question that may arise about that is whether that would be permissible to be pulled from federal funds.
Right.
You know, federal funds, very prescriptive on how you can use dollars, so that might be another area of question, whether that authorizer's fee could actually be taken from a federal, federal source.
Likely have to look to other states to see how they've done that, and whether it's been approved.
So I have a question for Todd, I guess, on this. So I, I know what we said before about our responsibility of voting, but does the legislature really have the authority to tell us to take money from one location of a county in the Northern Kentucky scenario and put it into another, when we know that that's a strict violation of what those taxes were collected for? That if we vote, are we held accountable for voting against something when we knew that it wasn't constitutional muster? So, because our other regs say we can't do that. We have other regs on the book that say we can't do that.
First slide that said the board shall promulgate regulations.
Correct.
And I would say that really, the legislature's already done it. This piece of legislation was really unique, because it set forth extremely prescriptive requirements, but yet said the state board shall promulgate administrative regulations. It really makes no sense. You know, the state board is here as the policymaking expert, for it to exercise its expertise in education to determine what education policy should be. So what we would like to see is legislation that sets very broad parameters, but then lays it in the lap of the state board to determine what those details are. Unfortunately, that's not what we had with House Bill 9. The legislature set forth every single one of the details, and then said, "But the state board should put it in regulation." In the event that there were any suit filed against this board, we would argue that it simply carried out its responsibilities as set forth by the General Assembly. To date, we have no court that has told us that this is unconstitutional, and it's for the judicial branch to make that determination. So, you know, we would, we would simply point to the fact that we carried out our duty as directed by the General Assembly in promulgating regulations, but if anybody has a problem with the constitutionality, it's the constitutionality of House Bill 9, and you must challenge the legislation that was passed by the General Assembly. There were some questions, I think, earlier about asking the Legislative Research Commission for an interpretation. I would say that we also have to be careful about that, because the legislature doesn't interpret its own law, as much as sometimes they may want to, and I can understand that. We have a three-branch system of government. It's the judicial branch that interprets the law, not the legislative branch. So it's a very dangerous situation to ask one member, or even a majority of the members of the General Assembly, what they meant by their laws, because after the fact, it, you know, it's kind of easy to play Monday morning quarterback. We would ask the judicial branch what is meant by the laws.
Because my, my, my case is the fact that, you know, superintendents and others have to follow the educational professional standards, and just like you do as an attorney. And if you know something as an attorney that is a violation of something, you have a responsibility not to vote for it one way or the other, or you could be brought up on ethics charges. So a superintendent, because right now, you know, we have the Educational Professional Standards Board, and those that determine discipline. So let's say that a superintendent, if we know that we're not supposed to be sending money from our county over to that county, because we collected that money for a particular purpose, and the law states that, and we send that money over there, aren't we willingly contributing to something that we don't think is appropriate and could be held accountable for that?
So one of the provisions of the ethics code is to follow state law, and I would respond, Dr. Poe, that that's what, what's being proposed before this board to do, to follow out House Bill 9, that the General Assembly has said this board shall promulgate regulations. We have used all of their terms that they specifically set forth to do so, and then we wait for the court system to determine. If one of those superintendents or a school district wants to go to the court system and ask for what's called a declaratory judgment, put it before a judge, and say, "We're not sure what we're supposed to do here. In one regard, we've got, you know, this, this requirement tugging at us, how we ask our community for these taxes, and in another regard, we have House Bill 9, and now these regulations," then the court will decide that matter, and we'll get an order from a judge that all of us can follow going forward.
So that school, that school that, the hypothetical school that we said may lose a, or have to pay for an extra 100 students, they could file suit and do what you just said?
The district.
The district. Yeah.
So Randy, Todd and I had almost this exact same conversation six weeks ago or so. Having been a superintendent, I would never have asked my board to take action on something that I worried would lead to some kind of litigation. But I did, I appreciate that Todd helped in my drafting of my comments today, the reminder that the Kentucky Supreme Court has consistently held that statutes are generally afforded the presumption of constitutionality until determined otherwise by a court. So that statement really did help me get over the ethical moral hump that I felt about being able to vote in favor of those, because I have to take the Supreme Court's decision as it's okay for me to do this. I presume the constitutionality of the legislation until it's been determined to be unconstitutional.
That, that's a good clarification. So when, when we vote later, we can put that in the record, correct? Thank you.
That's true. One thing I don't think has been mentioned, I just want to make sure you, to call it to your attention, in your portal, you'll see the letter from LSAC. They had a two-hour meeting that sounded a lot like our meeting today. They wrestled with the same demons that we've wrestled with in the conversation. Chair Fletcher did ask us to, ask Meredith and team to include in the letter their specific responses and concerns about their vote as well. They struggled with exactly what Dr. Poe has brought, uncovered this afternoon as well. Ultimately, though, they did vote to endorse and ask us to approve the regulations. All right. Any further questions? At this time, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve Emergency Regulation Nope, sorry, wrong one. Eight, 701-KAR-8:050E, and Regular Regulation 701-KAR-8:050. Do I have such a motion? Dr. Robinson, thank you. Do we have a second? Odd. Under Roberts' rules, the motion dies in the lack of second?
Yep. We would need a second to move forward with discussion and vote for it to go forward.
I will leave it forward with the second. I have a motion from Dr. Robinson, and a second from Mrs. McCrery. Discussion.
I'll make one point.
Thank you.
So we, we have considered the challenge that's before the board, that you're being required by statute to promulgate regulations that you do not think are appropriate, or constitutional, or sound policy. We also balance that against the directive to the department and this board to do exactly that. We did consider not moving forward with the regulation, which would expose the board and the department to a lawsuit that you failed to follow the law, which we don't think we would be on good standing or good legal grounds to defend. However, if you do move forward the regulation, and we have all identified the constitutional policy problems associated with it, then we'll likely be sued on those issues, which we're okay with. So I'll leave it at that.
I appreciate that. I mean, I think that's how we all feel, and just so that we have it on record, that, you know, we'll, we'll not struggle with this, but we'll do our responsibility, just like we did with COVID, and people didn't like that. We'll, we'll do this, but knowing that the legal challenges are out there, and that we brought those up, and excellent advice by our counsel over here on those things, and we'll have to let the court decide, but, you know, when I do vote, I want to explain my vote, and you can read your statement that you have better than me saying that for, for the record. Because I think what you all did is a good thing for overall charters. I just think with House Bill 9, what they did with these outside authorizers and the different things, create this muddy water. If they left that particular portion out and left it to a district, then we really wouldn't have these constitutionality questions, I think. Because, you know, if, if, if I'm a resident of Kenton County, and I'm in Kenton County in, or a charter school, I'm fine with that, but I really have a problem with an outside authorizer being able to override local citizens when they're not even in that area to, to set up a charter is just wrong. It's just wrong, at anything.
Thank you, Dr. Poe.
And that's as a local taxpayer talking. I mean, you know-
Dr. Poe and local citizen. All right. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, guys, for your patience in getting into the nitty-gritty on this, on the regulations related to funding. We have a motion, and we have a second, and we've concluded our discussion for today. So Dr. Brew, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Joanne Adams.
Vote yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Yes.
Patrice McCrery.
Said yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Randy Poe.
Yes, with an explanation that Dr. Young will give.
Sharon Robinson.
Yes.
Lee Todd.
Yes.
Steve Trimble.
Yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, yes, and I would like to explain my vote. I voted to approve the, these funding regulations, because I believe it is my duty to do so. At the same time, I have grave concerns about the constitutionality, as well as the feasibility of these regulations as a matter of practical implementation, especially as they relate to funding. I am also concerned about opening up this board, our commission- also concerned about opening up this board, our commissioner and the department, to potential litigation upon approval of the, of these regulations because of the weaknesses we have wrestled with today. But as we have discussed, I believe any such litigation would really be a challenge to House Bill 9, not the actions of this board. We have a call. Uh, no, we have a, motion passes, thank you. All right. And the commissioner does have to excuse himself for just, for another meeting. At this time, we always devote some attention on our board agenda to dedicated public comment. This segment is limited to ten speakers at a maximum of three minutes each, but we do not have anyone who has signed up to speak today. We did, however, receive a public comment notice via email from Dr. Kelly Wessel, a dentist in Kentucky, and she writes, he or she writes to us concerned about limiting the number of doctor's notes that a student could have as an excused absence from school. Dr. Wessel notes how important dental health is to the overall well-being of children, and she urges us not to limit doctor's notes for students who might use, who, who might see that as a barrier, families who would see that as a barrier for good dental care. And just as a note, we, as a board, do not have such restrictions. Dr. Wessel notes for doctor's notes as being too limiting. We do not, as a board, have policy that restricts or regulation that restricts the number of doctor's notes that a school district can allow. But we really appreciate the input from Dr. Wessel. At this time, we have an item on our agenda where board members are encouraged to raise issues not included on the agenda or to share good news information or ask for purposes of clarification, referral to committee, or scheduling for future board review. Do we have any such board members sharing today? Dr. Poe?
Sure, but I got a question, I guess, for Todd's group or the commissioner.
Sure.
Know that in the legislature, they may null and void our building requirement statutes for the next two years, but during that particular time was for us to put together a committee to study and make, where are we on that particular process? Because I know the legislature's meeting, I would like us not to fall into a situation where they mandate to us, but we have our own types of things. So, I was just wondering where we sit on that, because, you know, we, it's, we're going into another session, so we're almost a year, well, we're half a year maybe into the process. So, I was just wondering if, if we have such a thing or not. I know you're meeting with the legislature, legislators, but that's a separate thing from us having our own process.
Right. Sorry for the volume there. Just get that back a bit. So, we've been internally reviewing regulations, and these regulations are, I think extensive is putting it lightly. We have made good progress, but it's like swimming in mud. The more you swim and you struggle through the documents that are incorporated by reference, the construction regulation alone has, I think it's over thirty documents that deal with construction. So, staff, I think they meet weekly. We follow up back with them to review recommendations and changes. They're also having conversations with housing buildings and construction and some other groups to get a better idea of what some of our regulations look like. One thing in addition to that is training. We didn't feel that the, the training was there, it just was not as prescribed as we thought it should be, and that's something that's being discussed, is how to build a stronger training curriculum for not only school districts, but the architects and others that are involved in this business.
Yeah, I guess my thing was, as the commissioner had said, when you guys came out with your standards before, this was the start, just a, a patchwork, but some technical changes, and he was looking at an adaptive change overall by looking at what other states were doing, not necessarily what internal staff wanted. And I would just, I didn't know if he formed that outside consulting or looked at outside things.
Yeah, it's a great question, and I talked to the commissioner on Monday about that, and he said that he was going to talk to Robin and team and have them come back. We could do it at the December board meeting, but to give us that kind of interim update in this two-year period, operating under this current allowance, and then give the board an update on that process. So, we'll give them some more time to flesh out those comments, Che, but that's a good opportunity for us to talk about it. I think other people are interested in that same question.
Thanks.
Great example of something that, if you have anything like that on your mind that you would like to see on an upcoming board meeting, this is a good time to call those out. It makes me think, Robin, too, and I know you'll put these systems in place as well, but as charter schools do begin to open in Kentucky, I know I'll be interested as one board member to hear some regular updates about what we know about them and, and how these regulations, as you mentioned, unfold over time as contracts are executed, and so I know that will be a matter of keen interest for us starting next year. Dr. Todd?
Couple of things. One, I want to thank the staff for the work that they put into this. I know you've had to struggle with this for quite a while, as well as the commissioner and our chairman, to think about how to respond to something that's thrown at us like this. And I know that you've given a lot of thought, and you're giving us a lot of great advice, and we really appreciate that, and we'll hang together with you on that. On another note, I had the pleasure with the commissioner of visiting a fourth-grade classroom in Waco, Kentucky. I didn't know there was a Waco, Kentucky, and they were part of an eight-million-dollar grant to bring some new teaching techniques into the classroom. And the thing that was interesting is the students were sitting at tables of four, doing an experiment with marbles and things and collaborating with one another. The commissioner said, "This young lady wants to meet you." So, I went over and this little girl said, "I want to be an engineer and an entrepreneur." And I said, "Okay." She said, "Do you know how long I've been thinking about that?" I said, "No." She said, "Three and a half years." And I said, "Well, what, what would you want to invent?" She said, "First thing would be a wheelchair with a recliner, so that when you're going to x-rays and so forth, they could be comfortable." She said, "I did come up with a coaster made out of some popsicle sticks and some other things, but, but I kind of blew that because I painted it, and when you put your drink on there, the paint would transfer to your cup, so I had to ditch that." She said, "But I came up with another design, and I got twenty bucks. I sold them at my neighborhood." And so, I said, "Okay, I got to keep up with you."
She had your number.
She, she did. She was precious. But the, the learning process and that was so different than the rote learning, where you turn to page twenty-six and let me read to you what's on that page and see if you can memorize it, so you can check a mark on a box that's two months from now. And I applauded the, the teacher. She was spectacular. She said, she had been teaching for twenty-three years. She said, "I thought I was a good teacher until I went through this process." I think it speaks pretty strongly to the investment that we need to make in the teachers to allow them to do the jobs that they're capable of doing, given the proper resources. And it was, and then I would say, too, on the commissioner's behalf, he went with me to what UK calls their patent palooza, where they recognize all the patents that were issued this past year, all of the professors who had gotten licensed, or somebody had licensed their technology. And my point was, you go to the fourth-grade room and you see the beginning of a process. The end of that process ends with patents and jobs that are well-paying jobs and can change this nation and change this state. And so, that's the continuum that we're looking for, and that's the profile that we want to create for the students who can participate in that kind of palooza. So, I had a great day.
I love that story. Thank you so much, and thank you for doing that visit. And in Portrait of a Learner Language, she provided you with evidence of her ability to be a creative contributor and a perfect example. So, Mrs. McCrery?
Yes. As a part of the whole school, whole community, whole child.
Yes, thank you.
Group, of which Holly and I represent the board, the subcommittee, is part of our board, and we represent you all on that. We had a wonderful presentation from Kentucky SHAPE. I want to make you aware, and KD's doing a good job of promoting this as well. November seventh through, the thirteenth, Kentucky SHAPE, which is the Association for Health and PE, is promoting World Kindness Week. So, there will be a plethora of tweets going out about activities that are taking place in our schools. It, it leads up to World Kindness Day. So, if you are involved in tweeting out any, retweeting anything, those would be some good things to make very prominent on our feed during that particular week. The, there is online, there is a video. You can go and see some of the things that took place last year in the schools. So, I just wanted to promote that a little bit because I think it's a very positive factor for us.
Excellent. What, what's the week?
November seventh through thirteenth.
Going to be kind that week.
And it actually, this year goes through a weekend. They, they are sending out ideas for schools, to activities that people can do in the schools, but they carried it on over into the weekend in hopes that families will embrace it as well and do things with their children.
For those of you who might not know, the acronym SHAPE is the Health and PE Teachers Association. So, they do, they're, they have a really good online presence. Thank you. Well, as I conclude with board member sharing, I would just like to thank Jude, who's going to be the lone Kentucky State Board of Education attendee at this year's NASB conference later this month in Phoenix, and I'm so delighted that you can be there. So, our schedules just wouldn't permit this year, so we are happy to have you there. You've been involved with the Student Voice work through NASB as well, so I know you're already going to be meeting friends out in Phoenix. So, thank you for doing that, and for Dr. Robinson, who's mentoring you in the Student Voice work. And I would just like to close by mentioning that in your education.gov email today, if you haven't seen it already, you'll see from Meredith, a board member self-assessment. I ask her to look into including some of, including NASB's process for board evaluations. And so, it starts with individual board members weighing in. That'll come to me, and actually, NASB does a lot of the tabulation work, the aggregation work related to that feedback, and then in December, we'll have an item where we have a chance to evaluate ourselves and how we are doing in this role individually and collectively as a board, and I hope we find that to be a growth experience for us as well. So, take a look at that. It's a, it's, I just looked at it this morning. It's a fairly simple survey, but it'll be a good place for us to start. Thank you again for a very productive meeting, for your attention to difficult matters as well as the matters of celebration that we've enjoyed over the last couple of days. Many thanks again to Logan County Schools, especially those here at the Career Technical Center, and a special thanks to the entire team, takes the whole KD Village to roll out these off-site meetings, and it does not go unnoticed. We appreciate all of the effort that goes into that. And I know you're dying to break this place down to get ready for the next meeting, so I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
I can always count on Ms. Adams. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bloodworth. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Trimble. Thanks, everyone.
You guys, good to see everybody.
You too.
Good to see you next meeting.